Well, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Welcome to the Ferndale City Council Meeting for Monday, January 14, 2013. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Galloway-
Here.
Martin-
Here.
Piana-
Here.
Lennon-
Mayor Coulter.
Here. Yes, thank you. We have a quorum. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What's the council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I would move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Galloway, supported by Martin. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Galloway-
Yes.
Martin-
Yes.
Piana-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Next item of business would be presentation. We have three presentations this evening. The first one is the Fire Department to announce promotions, and we have Chief Sullivan of the Fire Department here with us.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'd like to pridefully announce tonight our new members of rank in the Ferndale Fire Department. After a couple of years I've been in office, it took us a while with some negotiations and some bumps in the road, but we got it done, so we're on a new foot for 2013. So I'll have my guys come forward. The first one here will be, at the top of his list, would be Captain John Toit. He'll be taking over Battalion Captain on Battalion Two. The next will be Lieutenant Mikowski, who'll be taking over as the Lieutenant on Battalion Last but not least will be Sergeant Light. He'll be taking over Stephen Light as the Sergeant on Battalion Two. With all our promotions in place and all our spots filled, we'll be looking at doing some changing of duties and that and reassignment and pushing some duties and that down to the lower ranks of firefighters. So we'll be on a new era here and hopefully increase our efficiency quite a bit now that we got everybody in place. Thank you.
Well, appreciate it. Congratulations to the three gentlemen, and thank you for making that public and sharing the good news. Thank you, Chief. Our next item of business would be the Woodward Five Regional Sustainability Grant. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Coulter and members of council. My name is Nina Ignazik. I am a planner with Oakland County Planning and Economic Development, and I'm here to give you a brief update about our Woodward Five Sustainability Partnership Project. The county decided to undertake this project to work with our local units of government to try to figure out ways that local governments can work collaboratively across community boundaries to affect this thing called sustainability or the triple bottom line, which really deals with balancing our ecological, social, and economic assets. We began working on this project in 2011. The county applied for a grant from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality and was awarded the grant, and we issued a request for proposals to all of our 61 local units of government in Oakland County to come together with a group of communities to work with us on this sustainability project and selected the proposal from the Woodward Five Group. All of the city councils passed resolutions supporting the project, and we began working in 2012 on gathering input and data from the community through an advisory board and through several public meetings and community meetings, collecting data and working with city staff quite a bit to figure out what actions the cities are already taking and what actions they want to take in the future. We're working right now on really just synthesizing the products for that. We're continuing to document actions, and we hope to get a product to you by about March 2013, so within the next two months, and hopefully hold a final public meeting that will unveil that product. A little bit about what we're trying to do here, this is not going to be a detailed plan for each local unit of government. This is a kind of an overall framework that the Woodward Five communities can use to figure out how they're collaborating together. It's also going to be used as a communications tool so that you're able to communicate to the public what the Woodward Five is doing regarding the topic of sustainability, and hopefully will provide some guidance for collaborative actions that the Woodward Five as a whole can take together. We're also going to be providing a tool that the communities can use to track and report their actions and their indicators, which were quite a data-intensive effort. We're looking to collect information that measures how communities are faring on these issues of sustainability. So this slide is a little bit detailed, but it kind of shows across the top the process we're going through. And then within our three triple bottom line goals, the outcomes that we're looking to address in this project. So I won't go through each one right now. I'm going to go a little bit into detail into each one. So for example, with the goal of a sustainable economy, one of the outcomes we're looking at is having high-quality, efficient infrastructure, and we're defining that as having great services and high-quality infrastructure that's maintained over time. And what we're doing is we're actually trying to go out and find quantitative measures that we can look at to see where the communities are with regard to that. So for example, we're looking at things like condition of roads, resident satisfaction, where surveys are available, water, sewer, land breaks, things like that. Within the topic of, or the goal of a sustainable environment, for example, we're looking at strong green infrastructure and natural resource networks, defined as having green spaces in the community and recreational opportunities as well as ecological services. And we're looking at quantitative items like the percent of dwelling units that are within a half mile of a park or the acres of parkland per resident, so those kinds of metrics. For the topic of community, for example, we have a goal of diverse community, which is defined as ethnic, religious, age, and cultural diversity of residents and business owners, celebrated and welcomed in the community, and we're looking at quantitative metrics like affordable, how affordable the housing stock is, and racial diversity and things of that nature. So we're working with these community, with the five communities to try to come to a common set of indicators. A few of the communities are tracking things that others aren't, but for the most part there's the common framework there. One other thing I wanted to mention regarding the indicators, we're trying to figure out if there's a comparison either nationally or locally, and so where that is available, we are providing a comparison to sort of see where you are in a context. But for a lot of these data items, we don't have a comparison, so we're just starting at your baseline, and you'll be comparing against yourselves going forward. The products that we're looking to deliver will include a technical document that will include all of the information about the data and the process that we went through, as well as some graphic pieces that we hope that you'll be able to use as that public communications piece, and then finally that data management tool that will help city staff track these actions going forward. So as I mentioned, we are kind of wrapping up the project right now, finalizing the plan, continuing to engage with the city and education stakeholders, and we will be hopefully delivering our product in March. So thank you very much, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. Does council have any questions? That's exciting. I didn't realize March was when you were going to wrap it up, so-
We're trying.
Yeah. How will it be, how will the plan be presented? Will it show up on our door? Are we going to have some sort of a-
Well, originally we had thought we might have another public meeting to kind of unveil it, but we'll be talking more with the city staff about the best way to go about doing that.
Okay.
I just want to thank Nina for all the hard work she's done on this, corralling five different communities with five different way of doing things. She's done a great job in capturing all of the information, and I also want to thank Joe, who's been the lead for the city of Ferndale on our part of the project, and all the other city staff who's helped get that data through them so that we can have a comprehensive plan. So we're really excited to see the final results and see how that goes.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, and thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Presentation C is the 2012 Holiday Light Awards. And I saw Peggy Snow. There she is.
Good evening. These are for the Holiday Light Awards. It may seem like it, but really it wasn't that long ago, and I see a lot of lights are still up in the city. It's really hard. You just can't describe the holiday lights to people. They, you know, you see one that's all clear lights, you think, oh, isn't that pretty? Then you see multicolored. They're all great.
And I thought this year in particular looked better than it has been in the-
I think it was, we had that worm spell. People had more time to get out and tweak their decorations. And thanks to our cable staff, we have a short video of the lights. We did that last year for the first time, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to call off the names, because it's not that long, and I'm going to call off the names. We'll give out the certificates, and then we'll see the little short video, and you'll see how pretty they all were. So the first one tonight is the commercial. It's for Dino's Lounge, 22740 Woodward. It looks great every year. And the first residential is Justin Merchant at 484 West Troy.
Is it a one letter? Is that inspired you or?
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next one was a joint effort by the family. It's Hugh, Lila, Samantha McDonald. Are they here this evening?
Jewel?
Yes, thank you, thank you. 751 Jewel. I guess they couldn't make it. Okay.
They're taking the lights now.
That's true. A lot of people. The next one is Thomas Sampson at 1436 Orchard. No, I'm seeing they're here. Okay. And the last one is Norman Audrey Raymond at 1166 Whittington. So that's all for this evening, and we'll just show the little short video.
And Peggy, as always, thank you for you and your whole team's help for doing this. Well, again, congratulations to all the winners. And thank you to our media staff for putting the very nice video together. It's really helpful to actually see the houses lit up. It really did seem more than usual. If council will indulge me, I'd like to add a fourth presentation, because I see our county commissioner here, and I always like to give our elected officials an opportunity to step up and give us any reports. She stepped out? Uh-oh. She was here. Okay. Uh-oh. Now put her on the spot. Commissioner Zach, I just called you, and then you took off on me.
Good evening, everybody.
Welcome.
And thank you for the opportunity to come and present at my first official council meeting. I was sworn in last week, and it's a pleasure to be able to serve Ferndale and get to know you better. I'm Helene Zach, and I wanted to let you know I am going to be serving on the Finance Committee, which oversees all of the financial issues of the county. One of the things that we do as Commissioner is to oversee operations and approve the budget. I also will be serving on the Public Services Committee, and that oversees sheriffs, courts, animal care center, which is very controversial, and things like that. So I do want to tell you about an exciting opportunity, and I will send this to April that you can pass on, but there is a pot of money that was allocated to help prevent foreclosure, mortgage foreclosure. And there was roughly about $500,000 that was allocated for the state of Michigan, and we have not been able to spend that money on mortgage foreclosures. So what has happened is that they've allowed us to use it toward tax foreclosure. So there's a couple hundred thousand dollars that's available for Oakland County residents to apply for this hardship tax money. And what we recommend, Treasurer Meisner, is that you go to a certified housing counselor, because the screening process is not simply done. It's about a 45-minute application process online, and it's better if you go through one of our certified housing counselors, such as Olsha, Lighthouse. You also can go to the treasurer's office, and he has volunteer housing counselor staffing there so you can get assistance. There's JVS, Community Housing Network. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity.
Thank you.
And that's all that I have to report today, but I welcome questions. I do like to hear from people. There are no stupid questions. You know, if you have any concerns, issues, please contact me, text me, email me. My information's on county website, www. oakgov.com. I'm helenekzak@gmail.com, or zachh@oakgov.com, too.
Well, thank you, and congratulations on your swearing in this room.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. That concludes presentations. We'll move along to call to audience. Call to audience is a half hour now and more time immediately prior to call to council if we need it. It's for anyone in the audience to speak for up to three minutes on any item that they wish. It's not on the agenda, because you get an opportunity to speak to those items when we get to that portion of the agenda. So come on up, give us your name and address, and three minutes is yours. Here's a familiar face.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to the members of council and the staff, my name is Craig Covey. I'm Breckenridge, and I'm here to talk about the legendary Ferndale Blues and Music Festival. For the past 12 years, volunteers from the Michigan AIDS Coalition and Ferndale Youth Assistance have been putting on a large, ongoing music festival, and it continues to grow each year. I have some pretty neat news for you, but it is a, it's grown now to 10 days. 10 days, three cities, 27 venues, and over 75 individual concerts will be going on during the annual blues festival. We do this for three reasons. One, to raise money for the two charities. The second reason we do it is to promote the cities and the downtown and the businesses in an otherwise slow time of the year. But just as important is that we are promoting music and culture and enabling people to get out. A lot of people get the blues during this time of year. They get cabin fever. The holidays are over, the taxes are going up, the nights are long and the days are short, and so we think it's an ideal time to come together and support. We have included and expanded the music, the blues festival now to include all manner of music, while we still have the very best blues musicians and bands in the entire southeast Michigan area playing throughout the 10 days. This year, we also have jazz. We have a multitude of rock and roll venues. We have house. We have 70s and 80s disco and dance music for Councilman Lennon. I see he's not here right now. But we actually, for the first time, too, we have a country night, so it's pretty exciting. I do want to list real quick the sponsors, because they enable us to put this huge event on and help us raise the money for the charities. That includes this year Bud Light, Absolute Vodka, Garden Fresh Gourmet, Danny's Irish Pub, The Bosco, Buffalo Wild Wings, Allstate Insurance, One-Eyed Betties, Hodges Subaru, Soho, Candlewick Shop, Suburban, Buick GMC, CBS Outdoors, Between the Lines, and Green Thumb Gardens Center, as well as Councilwoman, Commissioner Helene Zach, who is just here, Attorney Howard Schiffman, and a host of others. So I do want to hold up the poster. These will be going up throughout the region over the next few weeks. We have a website that'll be up very shortly, www.ferndalebluesfestival.org. And we always need more volunteers. The way we are able to raise money is through volunteers going through the crowds, seeking donations in the ubiquitous Blue Piggy Bank. If folks would like to volunteer for this, they can come to the Volunteer Coordination Meeting, which is this Thursday at the Michigan AIDS Coalition, 429 Livernoy. That's meetings at 5:30 PM. They can contact myself or Monica Mills, the co-chair, through Facebook, through email. We have so many venues, you could even talk to your favorite venue and get more information. Literally every club, every restaurant, almost every bar in the city, as well as in Hazel Park and in Royal Oak Township. Last thing I'll share is that we always make sure that we have venues that are non-alcohol venues, and this year we have four separate concerts that are targeted to families, children, and teens. For the first time, we have a teen event at Easy Like Sunday, and we have teens, teen bands and stuff playing, but there are other non-alcohol venues as well as all the clubs, restaurants. So thank you in advance. Most of you council members and the staff usually make appearances. We appreciate that a lot. It's a tradition that the mayor comes and helps us raise money. These various, it goes back to Mayor Porter, of course. But again, thank you, and-
It's always a great time for the city and for the causes, and thank you. Really looking forward to it.
Great music. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council, and the audience as well. My name is Zachary Schaefer, resident 16926 Burrwood Street. I'm great, I'm glad to see so many people out in the audience here, because this is my third time speaking at a city council meeting. And the issue that I come here with is affects not only everyone, every single person in this room, but every single person in the state of Michigan, as well as across the nation. And that issue right now is GMO, or genetically modified organism. Now, in this case, it stands for genetically modified organism pertaining to food. We have been eating genetically modified food since 1997 without our knowledge or awareness of it. So what is genetically modified food? This is when they take the DNA from a bacteria and a virus, and in some cases even an animal, they take it out, force it into the DNA of bacteria of corn, soy, canola oil, or even sugar beets. And when they do this, two things happen. The plant literally raises its own insecticide within its cell structure, so it becomes a pesticide as it's growing. So when a bug eats it, it enters the stomach. Because it has the DNA from a bacteria and a virus, it ruptures the stomach and the bug dies. That same corn is then fed to the cattle, and is unfortunately put on the shelves for us to consume. This all started in 1997. There is no mandatory labeling of genetically modified foods. And since 1997, everything has steadily been on the rise, as it was, but from 1997, cancers skyrocketed, diabetes skyrocketed, obesity, infertility clinics skyrocketed. Members of the Congress, 20 years ago infertility clinics were maybe something that was not so common, but since 1997, every single aspect about this really took off, and this is closely linked to genetically modified foods. I'm going around to the city councils, Beverly Hills, Birmingham, Royal Oak. In fact, I have a meeting with one of the members of Royal Oak this Wednesday, and I'm part of an organization called NoGMOforMichigan.org. I'm one of the board of directors. I'm also the national legislative representative, representing Michigan, and what I'm trying to do is trying to get a bill proposed to label genetically modified foods. We don't have any knowledge or awareness of what this food is, and just to give you an idea-
You have three minutes, so just-
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Just to give you an idea, the FDA has to regulate all the foods, but the FDA is not because there's such a backlash from the company that's making this, which is Monsanto. If anyone is interested in joining our organization about knowledge or getting knowledge or information about genetically modified foods and would like to maybe find some more information, I have a sign-in sheet here, and I would certainly love to pass it around and give you a little bit more information. I could stay to the end of the meeting. I just came here to Ferndale, to your city council, to ask for your support and help us out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Smith. I'm at 440 East Webster, one of the couple of addresses I spend time at here in Ferndale. Almost confuse them. I'm here to talk about just a really fun thing that's happening in Ferndale. We have, we're part of a sixth school consortium, the Ferndale High School is, called Center for Advanced Studies and the Arts, and CASA has a Japanese program. And my daughter's one of them, and it's a really neat program, and it's kind of intensive, and I have no idea how she does it. But they are ambitious and excited kids, and they're planning a trip to Japan in the summer of 2014. And there's nine of them out of that class who are going to do it, and they're having a fundraiser spaghetti dinner that we all love this Friday at the Klosin City Hall's Community Room. It's $5 to attend, and there's going to be pizza, spaghetti, soda, a silent option, a 50/50 raffle, and student artwork for sale. So there's more information on ferndale.patch.com, and there's flyers at the Candlewick Shop, and just ask around any of the kids, and we would love to see you there.
Give the date and place again?
It's Friday, the 18th, and it's at-
It's Friday?
It's Friday, and I'm looking for a time here on the, there is a time listed on the webs, on the article on the patch, and it's at the Klosin City Hall's Community Room. So we'd love, I'm going to be there. Not that it matters, but I'm going to be there, eating spaghetti, and I would love to see you there, too.
Thanks, Jackie.
6 to 8 PM.
6 to 8 PM, Jose.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to be at that fundraiser, too, so.
Cool.
My name's Jim O'Donnell. I'm here on behalf of the Ferndale School Board. I want to thank Mayor Coulter and Councilwoman Piana and Councilman Martin for attending our ceremonial swearing in last Monday, and thanks to the mayor for swearing in Kevin Deegan, Kraus, and I. I wanted to just announce that our strategic planning process is rapidly gaining steam. We're going into the community meeting portion of our planning, and that'll be starting at the end of this month and into February. And certainly, all of the municipalities' leaders are going to be important to that, so be on the lookout for invitations to that and to the community as well. We'll be inviting the community to several meetings. And as part of that, I wanted to invite the city council, if they want, to send someone to, to the planning committee that we have, that the school board has designated, or to come to a school board member in just, school board meeting, and just talk a little bit about how we can align the school's planning process- how we can align the school's planning process with the work that the city does, particularly the city's master planning process. So, that would be important to us, so that we can, you know, make sure that all of our goals are aligned.
In fact, Councilman Galloway has been our liaison to the schools, and I think he's nodding that he would be open to providing that input.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Well, we look forward to seeing you all and the public throughout the year.
Good. Thank you very much. Congratulations on your swearing-in.
Thank you.
Christina?
A few quick announcements from the DDA. I just wanted to remind everybody that on Monday, we do our civic duty and put ti, extra time in on Martin Luther King Day and actually volunteer our time to put together our annual planning meeting. We do invite the community to come out and participate. Helps us put our goals and objectives together for the year. There is a survey that we also put online today on Facebook, and those who are on our eBlast list, you are sent that as well. So, we do look for your input. So, if you can't come, you can always do it via survey as well. It's from 4 to 9 PM at the Koolak Center. And thanks to the city for opening doors and allowing us to get in there, so. Also, I want to put on all of your calendars, in February, we're looking ahead a little bit, February 21st, which is our third Thursday, we're going to be holding a friend and fundraiser, which will be a wine tasting event that we'll be holding at Winezilla, the new wine store in downtown Ferndale, right next to the DDA office. So, this is to get to know us as a DDA and find out more about volunteering, as well as, at the same time, raise a little bit of funds. And we'll be launching, those who come in attendance will get one of our bumper stickers that is "I Heart Downtown Ferndale." So, come out, enjoy, meet some new friends, get to know some of your old ones a little bit more. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. What time is the wine tasting?
Sorry? 6 to 9 PM. Thanks.
Thanks. Very good. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Council. I'm Maria Gary. I live on the corner of Allen and West Troy. So, I just wanted to talk about the parking on West Troy. When I purchased my home on the corner of Troy and Allen almost three years ago, I was aware of the hustle and bustle that comes with living in the downtown area. The energy and life of downtown Ferndale was appealing to me. After a short while, I became familiar with what to expect from nighttime crowds, especially the weekend patrons of Rosie O'Grady's, which is just a stone's throw away from my property. Yes, I found garbage along my property and witnessed the obnoxious behavior of people walking at 2 AM to their cars parked along Troy and in the meter lot across the street. Surprisingly, over the last three years, the quietest nights have been during festivals and other major events. I attribute this to the strong police presence. If the new parking restrictions are an attempt to curb the obnoxious behavior, it is not working. The new parking restrictions on Troy are not only an inconvenience, but a source of extreme frustration. It is inconvenient to purchase parking passes in advance when I want to have friends and family visit for longer than two hours. We recently had a gathering at our house, and friends spent over 45 minutes circling the meter lot trying to find parking. We never had a problem with guests finding parking until the restriction went into effect. Furthermore, I find it extremely frustrating that as a homeowner and taxpayer, I pay $10 per car for my guests to park on my own street. I do not see the benefits of this new parking restriction, other than it being a way for the city to make more money off its already tax-paying residents. Individuals who have business downtown during the day usually use Troy as a place for short-term parking anyway, which makes the two-hour restriction unnecessary. The only perceived benefit I can imagine is that this restriction is intended to limit the 2 AM belligerent walks to park cars. In that case, I would urge the Council to consider an alternative. You could establish restricted hours for the evening only, such as one to two-hour parking from 11 PM to 5 AM, so patrons of the bars and nightclubs must seek longer-term parking elsewhere, or establish a consistent police presence from 2, for the 2 AM walk from the bars. As I stated before, a patrol car stationed near the corner of Troy and Allen has done more to curb belligerent behavior than the parking restriction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Anyone else like to address Council this evening?
I actually do. I know this is about parking, but since I have a baby back there...
Okay.
This is, I live on West Troy as well. I live on 320. So, if you take a look in here, there's a beer can, bag of something. Cigara, you can check out.
Okay.
I live right behind my husband back there, Nick. My name is Gwen Milidinovich. His name is Nick. Our little baby's back there.
Good evening.
We live right behind the Thai Restaurant. So, we are kind of bookended by Rosie's, and then all the other bars and happenings, and then the alley. So, we have to deal with that kind of garbage pretty much every Sunday. We have to deal with people screaming and yelling, people drunk and kind of falling over to their cars at 2 AM. You know, I called the police on Saturday because I just heard screaming, and I don't know what we're supposed to do about that. You know, again, we've had great response when we've had a police car right either on the alley or kind of, I don't know, near the parking lot. You know, we moved from, we made a choice to move from Dearborn to Ferndale. We're professionals, you know, we're in our 30s. We made this choice. We had a baby in Ferndale. If you want us to stay and parent our child through the school system, things have to become safer at nighttime. You know, we are, we're really trying to work with it, but I don't think our job is to, you know, look outside our window like Serpico and try to get, you know, call in drunk drivers and, and, you know, we had someone kicking our, our back gate, our fence, you know. We shouldn't have to deal with that. It's paying very high taxes on West Troy, too. Huntington Wood-style taxes. So, I just think the best thing to do is to either make it parking restricted for just residents, or have police presence during bar time, because it's really not, what's happening isn't working at all. And the residents are having problems. We're getting scared. So, I mean, that's a big issue. I don't know if you have any want, have any questions for someone that lives right behind the bars, but now there's bars, two more bars opening up right behind us. So, where is everyone going to go? You know, from Dearborn, bookended by Inkster in Detroit. Everybody knows you don't drunk drive in Dearborn. You're going to get caught. Everybody knows you don't mess around with cops there. You don't, I lived right behind Michigan Avenue. What is different between Michigan Avenue and Woodward? Not too much. But I never had to call the police in 10 years. I never had drunk people stumbling on my lawn. I never had people screaming and yelling. So, something's got to change for people who are professional, younger people to want to move here and have kids and stay here. Because we've already talked about moving, and we've only been here for one year because of the things that we've experienced. Had to get an alarm system. You know, we're like on neighborhood watch, Maria and I. You know, we shouldn't have to be on neighborhood watch. So, please consider something different.
Thank you.
Making it seem a little bit harsher, you know? Not so easy. Everybody can drunk drive.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for coming. Good to meet you. Anyone else like to address Council this evening? If not, we will move on in the agenda. Thanks, everybody. The next item of business would be the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is routine items that Council enacts with one motion unless something is removed from the Consent Agenda by Council. First, let me read the Consent Agenda this evening. Consent Agenda A is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held December 17, 2012. B, approval to confirm the reappointments of Judy Palmer and Karen Boldis as regular members of the Board of Zoning Appeals for terms ending December 31, 2015, and reappointments of Krista Azar, Kevin Clark, Luke Forrest, and Deborah Brazen as regular members of the Planning Commission for terms ending December 31, 2015. C, approval of the specialized services contract for fiscal year 2013 and authorization for the mayor or designate to sign the contract. D, approval of the final payment of $13,858.31 to Spyglass for the successful recovery of credits applied to telecommunications accounts impacted by excessive out-of-contract pricing to be charged to account number 101940818. E, approval to fill a full-time police dispatcher position as submitted by our Human Resources Generalist. F, approval to purchase two F5T motion computer tablets with docking stations, spare batteries, and three-year accident damage protection insurance at the MSRP contingent upon government bid pricing of three manufacturing reps, competitive bids. That is from our fire chief. G, approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to the review of the City Finance Committee. What is Council's pleasure on the Consent Agenda this evening?
Move that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented?
Support. Very good. Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda this evening? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The Consent Agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda. Agenda item A, consideration of appointment of Jason Seaver to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending December 31, 2015. Derek, do you want to say anything about this? I know it's my appointment with, with recommendation of Council, but why don't you...
Well, first of all, I'm glad to introduce Jason Seaver, who volunteered and put his information in to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'll give him a minute to introduce himself and then speak a little bit about himself, and then we're clearly can answer any questions he may have.
Hi, Jason.
Good morning, Council. I'm a resident of Ferndale, have been for a little over two years, living on East Hazelhurst. I've had, my family has been involved in real estate one way or another for, oh, 37 years. Been involved in the title insurance business for about 20-some years at this point. I've had a lot of experience both there and through family, friends, et cetera, in, you know, residential, commercial, governmental transactions, et cetera. And I feel like I can offer some of that experience in a role with Ferndale, and zoning seemed like one of the best options for it. Like to take a second to thank Derek and his staff, because they've been great in just getting me going on the basics here, and hopefully, if I am approved for the Board, we'll forward the survey.
Appreciate it. Council have any questions or comments on this item?
You know, I became acquainted with Jason through the Real Property Law section of the State Bar, and talked to him extensively at the Summer Conference over drinks and such, and I think he'd be a great addition to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I just want to add, I really appreciate someone with your qualifications only deserves, so thank you for your time and stepping forward.
Thank you.
Hit 'em. Very much so. All right. Thank you. There's no other discussion, Madam Clerk, would you, a motion would be in order, excuse me.
I would move that we confirm the appointment of Jason Seaver as a regular member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending December 31, 2015.
Support. Moved by Galloway, supported by Martin. Any further questions or comments on this item? And just to reiterate, thank you very much for your willingness to volunteer in Ferndale.
Thank you for having me.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Thanks. Thank you.
I'd just like to point out from staff as well, we had two other BZA members appointed tonight and four Planning Commission members reappointed as part of the consent.
Yep.
The staff, we'd like to thank them for their service as well. It's been a great opportunity for us to work with them. And we also have two alternate spots available on the Board of Zoning Appeals while I have the microphone. And would encourage anybody in the city, if they are interested, to apply with the Clerk's office, or if they have any questions, don't hesitate to contact the Community and Economic Development Department. We'd be glad to answer any questions they may have.
And talk about any sort of general background or, or knowledge that you might...
I mean, obviously, any, any background in planning zoning, real estate, but we do a pretty good job of working with any resident in the city who's willing to serve. The Board of Zoning of Appeals is a great opportunity to learn how the city works, especially in relation to the zoning ordinance and citing of buildings and dimensional requirements. And again, these are alternate positions, so it's a good opportunity for anybody who's interested to get involved in a low-stress situation and then work their way on other boards and commissions in the city if they're interested. So, feel free to contact us. Thanks, Mayor.
Contact the city clerk if you're interested in an application for one of those alternate positions on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Thank you, Derek. Very good. Regular agenda item B is a consideration of a contract amendment number two with the Detroit Water and Sewerage Department, and I think Lloyd Curtin, you're going to introduce that item.
I certainly will. As Councils are aware, City Council entered into a water service agreement with DWSD in April of 2008. The contract provides for specific reopeners, of which this is year five, and the changes involve around three specific types of changes. One being the pressures and flows and volumes based on actual historical data. The second type of changes are infrastructure changes that may have taken place that DWSD wants to document and make aware of. They are not part of the public arena. They are in your, they are available at the Clerk's office for your inspection. And the final changes are largely language clarifications. And so, it is my recommendation that Council approve the amendment.
Thank you. And I would note that, Dan, you had a letter in here stating, I guess, in, in, in general, that the changes are aware of, and minor in nature in your, in your view, and acceptable to the city.
That's correct, Your Honor. Obviously, the exhibits with respect to the pressures and the projected amounts, that is a substantive change, but that is based on historical data, and it's certainly, the form of the agreement is approved as the form.
And based on, on, on things that you, that we as a city offered, correct?
Absolutely. There's things that we track on a day-to-day basis, and, you know, there's, there is some interpretation as far as DWSD will take into consideration if there was an unusual event that caused a spike in our usage and would result in higher rates. Any of those types of occurrences have been withdrawn from the calculation so that they don't adversely affect our future rate.
The city will have an opportunity in five years. There's an amendment period to address new issues with respect to, to volumes and pressures five years from now, too. So, this will not be the last time that Council will have an opportunity to take a look at this.
And this is, and we're still, questions of clarification, but this is a relatively new thing, though, this, this change, that we have this opportunity, because the contract before was back from the 50s, if I understand correctly, so...
This agreement was entered in 2008, Lloyd, I believe, right? And then there was, there's already been one amendment to the Exhibit A after, I think, two years, and then this was three years.
It's, and every five years thereafter.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
The original contract went all the way back to, I think, 1954.
Yeah, that's what I remember reading. Any other question or clarification?
If I may, mine's more of just a question of usage, I guess. What would, what would trigger us exceeding the maximum flow rate? What...
Well, if you have an extremely dry and hot summer, you know, usage per household goes up, and then overall, there are some things that we can do to, you know, limit outdoor spray cleaning and things like that if we notice that we're going to breach that. That hasn't been a problem. We're not close to breaching our maximum flow rate, so we also, there's a, we have a $3 million, a 3-million-gallon tank that we can help to buffer, you know, program that to buffer the usage. And so, there's a number of things we do to try to hold those demands down on DWSD's system in order to provide a better rate for our citizens.
So, is that why in 2014 it's projected like a 15% drop in volume?
You know, it's a really...
How does that come from?
It has, has more to do with the economic downturn in the entire area. We are not meeting the projections that were originally put in place, you know, two years ago, three years ago, four years ago. We do have an upward trend, which is rare in DWSD's communities. They said out of the 84 communities that they service that there literally is a handful, and they, they wouldn't quantify that with who, but they were surprised that when the data was calculated, that we actually have an upward trend. So, our projections are much better than most of their communities. Although, anytime we're selling less water, fixed costs spread out on less gallons or less units of water will result in higher rates over time. And so, you know, we want to sell water, and we want to, we want to have the industry and, and the users here to help, you know, buffer those rates to our residents.
And that's what I was going to point out, is that the decline in our vacancy rate in the industrial area has probably helped somewhat with that, although some of them aren't as water-intensive users as their, as their predecessors, but that...
Exactly.
I would imagine that has some effect on that. some effect on that.
And the only final thing that I might mention is that in order to cover their fixed costs, DWSD is moving more and more into a fixed-rate formula, where the coming year will require, I believe it's 60% fixed rate, and, you know, those are hard and fast numbers that they used in order to pay their bills, and those are things that we probably will have to consider later on how they affect our residents, our users.
If there's no other questions of clarification, a motion would be in order.
I move to sign the resolution to approve amendment number two to water service contract.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Galloway. Now, any other questions or comments on this item? All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The item is adopted.
Thank you.
All right, you might be up next. Item C is the consideration of membership renewal with the Traffic Improvement Association. Is that, I don't know if it's from Lloyd, but is that you, April, or however you want to...
It's that time of year again to renew our membership with the TIA. As we have in the past, we've asked them to come tonight and maybe give an overview of where they are this year. As well as in your packet, Lloyd was able to get from staff what we utilize TA for, and again, we had another heavy year of utilization with them on the technical side of traffic, and wanted to give them an opportunity to come and kind of give an overview of what's going on for them this year, and then offer an opportunity for council to ask TA any questions. Are they here? Maybe.
Nope.
I'd have been in this understanding on our end, so I apologize for that. So with that, I guess if council has any questions about staff utilization, I think all the staff that are here that use them, including Derek and DPW, as well as Police Department is a big utilizer of their services that relates to traffic, and I know the DDA uses their services as well.
Other questions of council?
Well, I guess more of a comment, since I've been the one who has brought up our membership in the TIA since I've got on council, and I think the TIA has improved their service provision to the city. Since we asked them to come and present two years ago, they couldn't tell us what they've actually provided services for the city, and I think that they have worked very hard in order to do that. I think outside of providing the services for the city, which I think the DDA and the police are happy with, I have a philosophical difference with the TIA. They're not alley streets oriented, and I think that is problematic for some of our projects that we use them on, but at this point, I will trust that staff will manage that appropriately. I think that's heard it enough from me.
And again, you know, we have gravitated towards using them for technical support rather than planning part of what they do.
Yes.
Very, very happy and pleased with the products they provide as it relates to traffic.
Other comments, questions of council?
The last time they were here was two years ago.
Oh, they were here last year.
They were here last year. I brought it up in the first year.
Yeah.
They couldn't really demonstrate the services, and then we gave them a year, and they came back and presented, and were honest.
I think you have them come to another council meeting to, more than likely, have this communication on our end, so.
So a motion would be in order.
I would move that we tabled the next regularly scheduled meeting, approval of the city's 2013 community membership in the Traffic Improvement Association, and invite representatives of the TIA to present the materials prior to us taking a vote on reauthorizing membership.
Second, I can support that as well.
When does our membership expire? Is that a timing issue, or?
Yeah, I don't think so. I'm sure it's right around now, but it's, we do it all the time, so it's nice.
Okay. Any other comments?
Not going to cause a problem.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion?
Something.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Sorry.
Okay.
Struggling. Council members Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That motion is tabled until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item E on the regular agenda would be consideration of a microbrewer and small winemaker license for the Om Cafe LLC. Is that correct?
I think we skipped 7D, Your Honor.
Oh, we sure did. I'm sorry. Jumping ahead of myself, sorry. Item D would be the consideration to pay reimbursable expenses to, oh, I don't want to miss this one, Blue Water Financial Group LLC of 535 Woodward Heights from the revolving loan fund. It's an exciting project, and happy to have you here, sir. Sorry, didn't mean to skip you. Derek, you want to introduce this item?
You took the words right out of my mouth, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is one of those occasions when we're very happy to be here as a staff to announce the arrival of a new company that's making a significant investment in the community, especially when it deals with a formerly functionally obsolete building. But the reason we are here in front of you tonight is, as part of the city's brownfield program, it established a revolving loan fund that I believe the council is all aware of. It's a fund of money that is generated through the capture of tax increment financing at the back end of paid-off brownfield projects. So the fund is actually generated through that brownfield process. The money becomes available to the city to loan or grant to businesses or for a multitude of uses related to items that are eligible expenses identified in the Brownfield Act. That is why we're here tonight. Jeremy Goldstein represents Blue Water Financial, a company that is in the process of renovating 535 Woodward Heights and moving their headquarters here to the city of Ferndale. As part of that process, there was a list of identified eligible activities that they qualified for, that the project qualified for. They submitted a brownfield redevelopment plan to the city's brownfield authority, which was reviewed and approved at the authority level. The process for approval of the plan works exactly the same as a TIF plan for the brownfield authority, and therefore is in front of you tonight as council for approval as well. The plan identifies approximately $48,000, between $48,000 and $49,000 in eligible expenses that are part of over, I believe, a $500,000 investment and project on the part of Blue Water. And I'll let Jeremy get into the details here, but the company's made a significant investment in Ferndale, we believe. It represents about 20 to 25 jobs on a regular basis to the Woodward Heights corridor, and the brownfield authority approved it, and we're here as staff recommending you approve it as well. With that, I'd like to introduce Jeremy and ask him to say a few words about his company and why they chose Ferndale to locate.
Thanks. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Boy, I wasn't prepared to talk, but.
Put you on the spot.
We're an economic planning firm, and we're real big about maximizing economic efficiencies. We kind of have a dream, all of us, that part of our firm, the partnership, that it pains us, we're, most of us are from Michigan, to see some of these factories go. So what we've done is, if you noticed what Saab did up in Royal Oak?
Yep.
The same firm that did the transformation of their firm is doing the transformation of our firm. We're going to have a very upscale, techy tier, what I would call AAA lease with our own parking lot that's going to be catered right there to our clientele from all around the country. We also have plans to try to secure the building across the street. We haven't gotten there yet, and what we're going to try to do is put in an industrial-type kitchen so we can cater a 16-person classroom, a private gymnasium, and several offices over there as well. We have about 20 to 25 folks in our firm. Some of the gentlemen don't have their own firms in Northville, in East Lansing, they'll use a portion of our firm. So moving into it, we're already kind of at capacity, so we have a need for the other area. And we're excited to be in that corridor that has big communications, some of the technology companies that are moving in there. We like to think that we're being very innovative with respect to the use of our dollars, and I've run this by a lot of people who do planning all over the country, and they think it's a brilliant idea, and we're very excited, and we appreciate your help.
Well, we're excited that you're here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thanks.
Very excited that you're here. Thanks.
Obviously, with that, we're here to answer any questions about the project. Mr. Goldstein can answer any questions about the firm, and staff can answer any questions related to the brownfield process and the revolving loan fund. So, thank you.
So, council, have any questions of either gentleman?
Well, I do have one. And it's more on the what-if scenario if it doesn't happen. The payback period is 14 years. What happens if that obligation is not being fulfilled?
The payback period for us, the 14 years, is an incredibly conservative estimate. In the worst-case scenario, if the firm were not to be successful, or, I mean, it would be difficult for them to relocate, they've already invested their half in the building, but.
We have, between the six core of us, there's over 55 years of experience. I don't think we're going anywhere, but it's a fair question.
Yeah, and the honest answer to the question is, if for some reason it were to fail and the TIF not be there, then we would have to seek a different project on the site potentially to recoup that investment, if possible. Some of the investment is in the environmental work that's already been done on the site. I would have to check with the city attorney if a future project that generated TIF would, if we could capture that to repay it. But in the worst-case scenario, there is always with the potential with grant funding through a fund like this to lose the money if the project is unsuccessful. We think there's a very low possibility of that, and with the investment that's already taken place, I believe there's going to be an increased assessment on the property, which will generate the TIF. Whether or not Blue Water stays, we are able to capture that increase to pay back the city's investment.
And I would mention, it's my understanding that from, I guess, application till now has been about 90 days, and Derek, I think that's a credit to your staff in moving these projects along quickly. When someone shows an interest in Ferndale, we're able to sort of meet their need, not only meet their needs, but do it quickly, because in business, you know, things, you can lose opportunities like this. So I would congratulate your staff for the, and all the reviews that were involved in doing this as quickly as you did.
I'd tackle that. It's been a real joy with this project. The applicant and their professionals have provided everything we needed on a timely basis, which makes our job very easy. Our building official, our staff, our trade inspectors have gone out of their way to turn the reviews and get things out in a reasonable amount of time. I think we turned the permits in less than a week for the interior build, so it's been an effort by everybody involved to hopefully attract and get Blue Water here, but it's been very successful to this point.
Well, if there's no further questions, we'll take a vote, but I will say, welcome to town. If you have a ribbon cutting, invite us, please. I'd love to take a tour of your facility.
We're going to have a kickoff party. Actually, we're going to have a kickoff party for the group that we just secured at local on the 23rd, just for our firm, and then we're going to also have a grand opening party at the office once it's done.
Well, if you need a mayor, I cut a mean ribbon. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Oh, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion first. Thank you.
I move that City Council approve payment of up to $47,824 in reimbursable expenses to Blue Water Financial Group LLC and the city's local revolving loan fund in utilized tax increment created to reimburse the revolving loan fund, subject to the following conditions. Number one, if the applicant receives all applicable permits prior to the commitment to their work in two, that all eligible activities be inspected and approved by applicable city departments prior to reimbursement of the revolving loan fund.
Support. Moved by Martin, supported by Galloway. Any further comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Council members Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks again. All right, now, moving on to item E, which is the consideration of a microbrewer and small winemaker license for Om Cafe LLC. And who is introducing this item?
That would be me, Your Honor. Om Cafe is located at 23136 Woodward. They are asking for a small brewer and small winemaker's license. Our policy does not require City Council to hold a public hearing for this particular type of license, nor does the MLCC require it. The MLCC does require local approval, which is why this item is before you. The Police Department has looked over this application, the Community Development Department has done inspections, and they both recommend that we recommend the MLCC approval of this license.
Is there anyone here from Om Cafe, just by chance, that would like to introduce themselves?
I am surprised they are not.
Okay.
Imagine they're busy working.
I suppose. Chief, you took a look at this, as you always do, and meets the standards and objectives that you look for?
Yes, Your Honor, we have, we have, it's a normal, that's all.
What is council's pleasure?
Well, I guess every business owner who has asked for a liquor license of some kind has come in to council to explain the change in their business, and I really appreciate those explanations. So I'm more leaning towards having them come back in and present to us. I'm very supportive, but I would like to hear from them.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd support deferring it as well. I'd like to hear kind of their business plan around this and what their, what the vision is here.
And what kind of wine goes with vegan food, I suppose. I think that sounds reasonable, and it is typically what we've expected, and so I don't think we need a motion. We could just table that item until the next meeting, and you?
Do you need a motion to table?
Motion to table?
I'll make a motion that we table. Sorry, item 7E, the liquor license request for Om Cafe.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana, and someone on staff will let them know that we'd like to see them at the next meeting. That would be great. All right, Madam Clerk, would you, any further discussion on this item? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is tabled. Brings us to regular agenda, item E, which is a consideration of an amended parking rates plan. And I believe, city manager, you've moved your arm on me, but you're going to introduce this item.
I am. I think, I'll just help my neighbor. I will be talking about this, I think this is my fourth time coming in front of council with some adjustments to parking. It's been actually quite a busy year as it relates to making adjustments to parking within the city of Ferndale, and we are by no means close to being done. So we'll be talking a little bit about the next steps. I'm going to actually do a recap, but just a friendly reminder of who's on the city council parking team, or the city of Ferndale parking management team, is myself, the DPW Director Lloyd, Derek from CED, Chief Collins, Christina from the DDA, and actually, Council Member Martin has also been participating in some of our meetings as well. And the whole purpose of the city management parking team is to do implementation, and we partner very strongly with the DDA Parking Committee, who often offers direction and recommendations. So we're the doers, and we work with the DDA to try to get feedback and best practice information from them to move the system forward. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. This kind of started much before November 14th of 2011, but started to kick back into gear pretty heavily back at that time, when we revisited the parking committee and started back looking at the parking plan that we were trying to move toward, I believe in 2006, I believe is correct, because the DDA had a parking plan that started, they started moving toward implementation. And then just with a lot of changing and staff at the management level here, things kind of stalled for about a year and a half, and then I came back on board and parking kind of picked up again, and we revised, we kind of revisited the parking committee. So starting back in November, we brought to council at that time an update on where we were going with parking, and some of those things that we had discussed, that you would be coming and seeing in the future, were changes to the parking meters, multi-space, revenue adjustments, management options, and parking demand and solutions. So again, we'll be kind of talking about where we're at. Kind of, I wanted to give you an overview of the progress that we've made since then. Back in November, we started Park Mobile with the ability to use credit cards, which was a huge step for our system. Kind of have these in the wrong order. I already talked about the parking management team we moved, becoming a team again back in October of 2011, as well as partnering with the DDA Parking Committee. We started looking at the residential parking program with a pilot program in the Troy-Saratoga area. We're still revisiting that as we speak. We just had a follow-up meeting and follow-up surveys, of which were due last week, so now we're collecting that data to see where we are. With that particular program, the most common denominator was that enforcement just wasn't strong enough yet in those areas, so we're going to have to sit down as staff again and kind of revisit that. So we're looking over all of that information as well, and continually monitoring and figuring The American Legion Parking Lot was recently striped and signed, creating 18 extra spaces and also keeping them free to encourage people to park there. I know it sounds funny, but 18 spaces means something, so we're trying to find every piece of space that we have to encourage and have more expanded parking opportunities. We also were able this summer to resurface some parking lots that had been in disrepair for quite some time. Again, kind of part of the whole kind of stall on parking, we were actually at the same time getting trips and falls and starting to see more divots within the parking lots that those needed to be redone. In February of 2012, we came in front of council again to ask to get some technical support as it relates to doing the multi-space meter project. Not only would that RFP allow us to create specs for the multi-space meters, which again sounds very simple, but it's not. There's a lot of detail that went behind that, as well as looking at, with the same firm to look at parking rates and suggested recommendations for that. Then with that, on September 10th, we came back to council again for approval to move forward the purchase of the multi-space meters, which we approved on September 10th of 2012, which brings us to where we are today. So again, it's been kind of a busy year. It's been a lot of background and a lot of getting things put together, if you will. So what we are looking for today is, or some of the next steps that you're going to see, this won't be the first time you're gonna see me in front of you again, is confirm parking rates and pass costs, continue and complete the implementation of multi-space meters, start looking at our fee and revenue management of how we handle the auto parking fund, and the multi-space meter is a huge component of that. Right now, we're basically basing everything off quarters. It's the quarters that it's in the meter. This multi-space meter system is actually going to allow us to look at every transaction. When did it occur? How much did it occur? Where did it occur? Right now, it's all on quarters. So that's gonna be a significant addition in helping us manage and look at the future of our parking capabilities. And then one of the other big components that we'll be looking at is enforcement review and adjustments if necessary. So once we get these mechanisms in place, I think we're gonna be really sitting down with a plan, a comprehensive plan on enforcement. The other thing with that then, too, is once we have all this data and we start looking at all of this information that we have before us, that we're gonna continue to review and recommend future parking improvements. The multi-space meters again is going to be a big player in where we're going, because we're gonna have so much more data that we can, we can address, as well as looking at the economic environment and things of that nature. So we'll talk a little bit more as we go through this about what it means to expand the parking system. And then as we continue moving this forward, one of the questions is, as our color system is kind of growing, if you will, it's actually becoming an adult, and we're moving forward to a much modern system. And what that's gonna be changes in how it's managed. Again, right now, we have quarters and meters. And so it's a very simple, easy system to manage, but now with the multi-space meter, it's a whole different animal. And we're working with the DDA on that right now to figure out how best to manage that Again, to recap, as it relates to moving into parking rates, on February 13th, city council did approve us to go move forward with Rich &amp; Associates to look at not only helping us address and send out RFP for the multi-space meters, but to look at best practices and make recommendations on parking rates. And I'm gonna actually have Annika Norris from Rich &amp; Associates talk a little bit about, you know, the rates that she presented and the recommendations you have before us. But before she does, I want to talk just a little bit about why the rates need to change, or why we're asking for council to approve the rate changes. One of the key reasons for the rate change is this tiered system allows for movement of cars. We're really trying to motivate people who are parking on the streets for those quick trips. They run in, they get their to-go order, they run into the store really quick, not for the all-day shopping or the three-hour dinner that they're meeting their girlfriends for, for the evening. That's what the parking lots are for. So it really is going to help with the retail, the constant turnover of parking spots. And it will help move people, as well as also, when you look at passes, we'll show you again in a few minutes about pass rates, of looking at tiering even those parking lots, allowing for, again, those parking spaces that are closer to the stores. We want those open, in restaurants, for the patrons, and allowing for discounted parking for employees to park further out. So you'll see a lot of tier, not only in the system rates, but also when it comes to passes. And we'll talk about that in a few more minutes. One thing I want to be very clear about is some of the question is, where does this parking revenue go? And quite some time ago, there was a fun auto parking fund was created. And right now, all revenue that comes in from all of the meters goes into auto parking fund. The same thing will happen here. And what's currently happening is that anytime that we have revenue over expenses, it goes into a fund balance in the auto parking fund. It does not go into the general fund. It stays within auto parking. And what we're trying to do is build up our fund balance. Being able to do that was able, we were able to buy the multi-space meters and things of that nature. So even after that purchase, we still have $271,000 in the fund balance in auto parking. So this increase in revenue will also go into that fund balance for future expansion of our parking system. And we'll have more opportunity for questions.
Yep.
I think that's what I pretty much talked about. Oh, I guess now we can talk a little bit about, what is, when I say expand the parking system, what does that mean? The system is a big word. Expanding a parking system is not only just an increase in parking spaces, but it's how you use the system, where you use the system. All of those things matter. And so it could, when you talk about expanding the parking system, it could be more surface lots to a parking deck, increased bike parking, non-motorized connections for mass transit. The whole purpose is to focus the ease for parking adjustment and improve the efficiency of the system. So it's a very broad-based conversation on what it means to expand that parking system, because there's so much more, especially with that multi-space meter system, that we're gonna be able to do to increase that efficiency. So the point of the matter is you want people to be able to come on a Friday night and get a parking spot. They still might have to drive around, but eventually be able to get one, so. With that, I'm gonna bring Annika Norris up. She's gonna talk a little bit about how she came to those rates. And then when she's complete, we'll talk about how you're actually getting the rates before you, because some of them have been adjusted. So with that, I'm gonna bring her up.
Thank you. Good to see you again. Welcome back.
April pretty much went through and described the system, and I think that's a big thing that we need to focus on, is that this is a system that improves, and the money that goes into the system is used to continually improve the system. When we looked at the parking rates, we looked at, we sat down with the parking committee and the surrounding communities that were selected, were Ann Arbor, Detroit, Mount Clemens, Birmingham, and Royal Oak. And these are communities that were previously benchmarked in the study for 2005, 2006. And we know that there's not gonna be an exact comparable for Ferndale, but it is important to look at what the surrounding communities are using so we can have a benchmark, look at what's working here and what's not working here, and how we move forward. One of the big things that needs to occur within a parking system is there's kind of a hierarchy of parking rates. The on-street and the downtown tends to be the most expensive parking, because it's the premium parking, it's the spaces that turnover the most often. And as we looked around at different communities, let me pull out my benchmark. Currently, Ferndale is at 50 cents an hour for both their on-street and their off-street parking. One thing that we recommend in all communities that we go into is that the on-street parking be higher. And so that was the first place we started, it was with the on-street. Ann Arbor's at $1.50 an hour, Detroit's at $1.00 an hour currently. Mount Clemens is at 75 cents an hour. Birmingham varies, depending on where it is in the time, between 50 cents and $1. And Royal Oak changes based on the time of day to, or, and the location as well, between 50 to 75 cents, up to $1, depending. So one thing that we really wanted to make sure here is that we didn't have a complicated system, that it was very straightforward and easy. So for the on-street, we were recommending $1.00 an hour, just for all of the on-street. Where it does start to change is the off-street. What we're recommending is 75 cents for the lots that are the closest. And then we have a discounted lot that's 50 cents an hour. And all these lots are gonna be signed as you enter the lot, whatever the rates are that you approve. The signs will clearly state the hours of operation, what the fee is. If the, thanks, if the rate increases in the evening after 7:00, which is, what we looked at, are the busiest nights, obviously, here in Ferndale, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. Those are the nights that it's extremely difficult to find a parking space. Ann Arbor and Royal Oak, and I believe Mount Clemens do a special event parking, and then they also do increased rates in the evening. And instead of, instead of going for a flat rate after a certain period of time, we came up with going to $1.00 an hour in all lots after 7:00 PM on those times. It just makes it really straightforward and simple. It makes it, the machine, easy to set up, and it's not complicated. Okay, the lot that's orange or yellow on that map up in the top, which is the, it's actually two combined lots. It's West Breckenridge and now, now the name has changed to the, oh, it's just Lot 1. Yeah, just Lot, I'm sorry. So just Lot 1 up in the top, West Breckenridge, is a discounted lot. What we're trying to do is not only encourage employees to park in that lot, but encourage people that maybe want to come down and spend the whole day to go ahead and park in that lot. That lot is not very far. It's from the majority of the businesses on Nine Mile. So that part's definitely straightforward. And then for the employee. So the recommended rates for the parking passes, we kind of, we wanted to split that up into a discount, a standard, and a premium. So the discounted lot would be 84 quarterly or 252 yearly. The standard, 108 and 324. And then a premium, which is, goes up at 120 or 360 yearly. What we're trying to create here is a concentric pricing system, and it's something that is practiced all over, all over the world, really, in cities where they have parking problems. As you go out further, you're providing a cheaper rate for employees. And then as well as the free lot, which I know only 18 spots, when you think about it, may not be a lot, but it actually is quite a few spaces. And we know it's further to walk to, but we're providing it, and it's a well-lit, it's not a far walk. And then the premium spaces, I think you should kind of go backwards. The premium spaces are the orange, and you can't see them all on this map. I don't know if you all have maps in front of you, but it's under map to employee recommended parking rates. There we go. So the premium parkers would only be able to park in the, well, sorry. The premium parkers would be able to park in any of these lots. They're obviously first gonna try to find space in the orange lots that are closer, or the orange designated areas. Blue would be the standard, which is the next tier down, and they could park in the blue or the yellow. And then the discounted rate would only be allowed to park in the yellow lots. Well, and this chart shows what the current rates are right now, so monthly being $40, quarterly $80, and yearly is $240. So. Right, do you want to talk about just one more to change?
So let's just back up for just a second before we go to the residential. So again, just to summarize where we are with the parking rate recommendations for the general population, is moving from 50 cents per hour to $1.00 per hour for on-street parking. The 75 cents per hour in lots, which is again 50 cents. And then keeping Breckenridge Lot, that Lot Number 1, at 50 cents to encourage people to park there. We picked that lot, and Rich &amp; Associates recommended, as well as that lot is most often empty. If you, if you're on a busy evening, that one, you might get a chance to get a spot. And during the week, you have no problem usually getting a spot in the Breckenridge Lot. So again, it's trying to encourage people to be able to have some way to get some discounted parking, and that's where the Breckenridge Lot comes in. And then originally, Rich &amp; Associates had recommended a $3.00 flat fee for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 7:00 PM on of $3. And we recommend $1.00 per hour in lots, all lots, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday after 7:00. And when I say "we," let's talk about that for just a second, of how these rates before you came to be. So Rich &amp; Associates brought us the recommendation, and those, the part of the "we" that vetted it are multiple, multiple people. The city management team vetted it, and the DDA Parking Committee vetted it, and brought the recommendations to the DDA Board on Thursday. Actually, two times we've actually brought it in front of the DDA. Had multiple conversations, and ended up coming up with these, these rates. So again, it started at $3.00 flat fee, and we negotiated it to $1.00 per hour after 7:00 o'clock. So it was very healthy conversation with the city management team and the DDA Parking Committee, who then brought the recommendation to the DDA Board. And the DDA Board ultimately approved these recommendations to bring in front of city councils. So it definitely was a team approach in bringing these recommendations, and that is, that is, again, how you came, how these recommendations came to be. Is there any particular questions as it relates to these parking rates before we talk about the parking passes? Oh, and one other question, one other comment, as we were doing our research, found that the last time we raised parking rates was in 2004. It's almost 10 years ago.
And hours of enforcement would remain 10 o'clock?
Actually, no, we're actually, on another slide, we're actually increasing, recommending increasing enforcement from, right now, it's currently 10 to 10, Monday through Saturday. We're recommending 9 to 11. And I believe the recommendation from the consultant was 9:00 AM to midnight. So again, part of the negotiation of what we felt was appropriate, more appropriate for our community. That's an odd noise. And then same thing with the parking rates. Actually, we agreed to, we were comfortable with the recommendations made by the consultant. I didn't put this in the presentation, but the discount standard and premium lots, all of them are still a very, very big, a significant discount to the employee for parking. If they were to park, if they were to work 40 hours a week or 30 hours a week, it's a significant drop for them. And as you'll notice, the discount lot is very comparable to what they're paying right now. They just have to park, they just have to walk a little bit further. But we do give them the option to keep almost the same rate that they have now, but they have to go to the discount lot. But they can buy up to premium, and they can park anywhere they want to.
I think one thing that's really important there is, too, is we also included discounted, there's discounted rates on both sides of Woodward. And so all businesses are fairly close to at least one discounted lot.
So on both sides, you'll see that there's some, all three, discount standard and premium. Here, again, as I discussed, discussed with you before, we had a very healthy debate for six weeks between the city management, Dman, the DDA. This is where we actually didn't come to an agreement. This is the CBD residential rates. This is, do not be confused with the residential parking program. This is for the people who live in the downtown, who might live above one of the storefronts in the downtown. I think we figured between 25 I think we figured between twenty-five and thirty people that we, at the most are, who qualify for this rate. They're currently paying the same as a yearly pass. They can pay monthly, quarterly, or yearly. The consultant recommended fifty dollars for the year. The management team, just so you know where we came from when we made our recommendations, is we really tried to make the recommendations that were provided by the consultant, because that's what they do, and that's the information that they provide us. We did feel fifty was just a little bit too low as it relates to the residential rates. So we actually recommended seventy-five dollars for six months, one hundred for yearly. And the DDA parking committee wanted to make it one sixty-eight for six months and two fifty-two yearly. Their reasoning was because that they're already currently paying a pretty high amount. If they're doing it for a year, it's two forty. So they're paying right now for somebody to get a year pass to be residential, two forty. So they wanted to keep it close to the way, to where it is now. So that's the discrepancy there, is just that we wanted to recommend it closer to what the consultant said.
Why the odd numbers of fifty-two and sixty-eight? Why isn't it just two forty?
I believe that's the price of the, it's the same price as the discount lot.
It seems like there was real science behind that.
It's, it was the discount lot, it's the same rate.
Because it's the same rate.
Yeah, it was, yeah. So they're technically paying the same as for a year of a discount lot, and then quarterly, we're not doing quarterlies for residential, we're just going to do six months or a year, so it's quarterly times two. So that's how those rates came about. So it wasn't just kind of pulled from thin air. So that's the only one that, we actually don't have a recommend, recommendation to council because we disagreed on it, but it was, we just had two different philosophies of how we did this. So we can talk about that in a little bit when it gets closer to that resolution. Talking a little bit about parking enforcement, as we discussed, currently rates are, parking enforcement hours are Monday through Saturday, ten AM to ten PM, excluding holidays and Sundays. And the new enforcement recommendations are Monday through Saturday from nine AM to eleven AM, eleven PM. And again, that's to reflect the actual usage of the downtown area. We were interested in going until midnight, but the DDA parking committee recommended we only go till eleven. So that's the, and we were fine. We all agreed that we were comfortable with those, those hours.
Why the distinction between eleven and twelve?
At that, I think there was a sense that there was a focus on, on the bar crowd, and they didn't want them to be punished, if you will. And as well, so there was that as well, as Royal Oak is also till eleven. So not very many people go till midnight, and it just, you're not going to get as, at eleven o'clock, you're not going to have as much enforcement. So we were kind of looking at it from an enforcement side of things, too, that there comes a point when your enforcement team that's out there isn't getting the bang for the buck at a certain time of the hour, so. I think we kind of already been here. I already talked a little bit about how we got to those rates. And again, it really was a, I think we had a good time. The city management team, I guess you could call it that. But it was, it was, I mean, but it was a good opportunity. Yeah, look at the positive, right? It was a really good opportunity, though, for us to really sit down with the DDA, though, who, they live and breathe this every day. And, you know, you have your consultant, then you have the people who are living it, and then you have those of us who are, who are kind of stuck implementing it, if you will. And all of us were very different, coming into this with a very different philosophy. And so again, what you have before you is kind of the merging of, of all three, if you will. And that's how you have the recommendations that you have before you today. So minus the residential, I'm sorry, I, I left that open for you guys, but there's no wrong answer in that particular one. But I do want to really thank the, the DDA parking committee, who really worked hard. Derek and I ended up kind of being the, the people from the, the city management team, negotiating with them. And I call it negotiating because that's kind of what it was. But again, we had three different philosophies all at the same table, and we had to figure out how to get it there, so. So before we, we'll open it up again for questions, but just kind of finishing where we're going, because I think a lot of people want to know, what is, what does this really mean? So once, once we have these rates approved, or not approved, how, where it goes today, we need to finish the implementation of the multi-space meters. So we had originally said that we thought we would be completed just before Thanksgiving. We had a lot of things that came up that caused roadblocks with that. One of them was the handhelds that we were using. The state has sent down a mandate of how these, this information is provided, and it kind of caught us off, not really off-guard, but the current system we have, the current handhelds aren't going to be able to manage that. It's more of a backend thing. So we had to kind of look at our options. We have more than enough companies that are able to do that, but we, we needed to kind of make sure that we weren't getting into something that we couldn't get out of, and it won't be a problem. But we're going to have to do some work with the handhelds. In the meantime, what we're have, what we're using now will continue to work, but we needed to look into that. The other one was just, again, with three varying opinions on the parking rates, we just couldn't come up with them in time to get those done in November. And we were really hoping that when the multi-space meters would go up, that we could also discuss the rates at that same time, so there, all the confusions done at once, if you will. So what we're hoping with that is that the new data implementation will start the week of January twenty eighth, then we'll start, it will roll for two to three weeks, meaning what will happen is, is actually DPW is going to be working alongside of us as we put in the signage and cut the meters off, the signs have to go up. So it's a very methodical way that it happens. You will notice, though, that a couple of things did have to take place. We had to pour the cement for the multi-space meter units before it, before it got too cold. So we had to get those in, but the signage is not gone, has not been up yet until we have the rate. So again, it will roll with a parking lot at a time. The other thing that we're going to be working through is having ambassadors for the parking lots. So there's kind of two components of education. The business owners have been getting email updates from the DDA, as well as we sent out a hard copy letter just before the holidays, that this is where we're at. But then there's this user end, and that's hard because it's a mix of, it's people who have maybe have never been here before, who come on a regular basis. So we talked about that, we're going to try to get ambassadors for the parking lots at the busiest times, when they see people, making sure that they know where to go to put in their money, as well as probably some leniency as it relates to parking tickets, and having education materials that we can put on a car that maybe looks like they didn't put the money in, their, their space. So we also have created a website called FerndaleParkPlus.com, which is the name of our system. Again, that's FerndaleParkPlus.com, that gives an update on, kind of an overview of the system, and if, for people who want, it was really meant a lot for businesses to be able to kind of keep going on that website for updates. So that will be up for a couple of months, and so especially until our website is up and running, and we can make it as well to the DDA. So after that, once we start that implementation and finish that, now we, we still have a lot of work to do, and that is, we have to look at enforcement and start addressing gaps there, making sure that the enforcement that we have is meeting our needs. We need to continue to monitor, monitor the residential parking program. We're getting a lot of mixed reviews on that, so we have to keep looking at options in that particular area. And the bigger part, though, is, is the big, the now what. So now we've potentially raised the rates, we have this multi-space meter system, so where do we go from here? And again, this system is so much more robust to allow us to look at patterns and when and where we do, where parking occurs. Right now, again, just a reminder, we use quarters based, is where our decisions are based on. So this is going to be a much more healthy way for us to look at what's going on with our parking system. Looking at the economic environment and updating the parking plan, that was last completed in two thousand and six, and it was, again, amended in two thousand and nine, but things have even changed since then, it's three years ago. So we're going to need to take a relook at that, match that to what kind of patterns that we're finding, and what our system is, is needing, as well as still focusing on getting people in order to walk downtown, to ride bikes downtown, and things like that, it all matters. So with that, we open it up to any questions and concerns or suggestions that you have?
Thank you. And before we do that, so I don't know if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item, but this would be the appropriate time for folks from the public who would like to address us. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think everybody knows me, I'm George from Asajj. Thank you for killing the city. Thank you very much. With that program, you are killing the city. When you bring people visiting from outside, where the parking for free, and here, they don't even have fifty cents, I go for fifty cents a door meter, to have business, I can pay my taxes for you, and yet you have the art festival, you close up for three days, and you are, you do the art, the green festival, we close for three days, we lose revenue. People sitting in the office, they don't know the street. And even your, your highness, you don't know, you do not know the street. You don't walk in the street to see who's coming, who's not. Why you want to impose on people? How can people come in here? Already Birmingham people, they don't want to go to Birmingham. They go to the suburb, they park for free. We create a business for you so you can pay taxes, so you can put the light in the city hall, you can have the police, you can have the fire department, you can call the department. By that, you want to scare the business people. I'm already scared. You have to facilitate for the customer to come in. If you don't do that, you want to lose the city. And you, you don't have, I've been here thirteen years, you don't have a plan, what you want to do with the city? How many bars, how many restaurants, how many offices, how many retail? If I was you, if I was the city or the DA, I say to anyone who has a building, bring me a retail store, caliber retail store, I give you thirty percent discount on your personal property tax. What do we have? I stand up at twelve o'clock, I just seen a one on the street walking. Why you doing that? Don't kill your city. It's shame on you. You are all educated, you're, you have a job, you went to school. So don't listen to all these guys sitting in the office, because they drink a pub and we have committee, we drink the pub, we have committee, oh, we do this, this, this. No. You listen to us. We bring the people to Frindale, not to Frindale. DDA did not help me, it helped me only when I got my liquor license. Did not help me at all. Then give me two penny to put my light, I spent fifteen hundred dollars on my light for Christmas. DDA didn't give me a penny. If I was you, I would reject all that, come out to my city. The parking lot is, is not lit, people, they don't know what the meter, if they want to use the phone, they don't know, it's dark. You don't walk the street, you don't know what's going on. I'm crying for you, man. You're butched. You have to walk the street and understand your city. You do not understand your city. It's the major focus between Wayne County and Oakland County. What you doing? You don't have an office building. What are you doing? Wake up!
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address council this evening?
Sherry Wells, three fifteen West Troy. This is what caused the current problems, including those of safety for residents. Businesses elsewhere in the city must show how they will provide sufficient parking for employees and customers. However, in the CBD, the Central Business District, businesses do not have to. I assume that's because of the city's provision for parking lots and on-street parking within the CBD for its many businesses. But that CBD exception did not plan on as large a single business as the new Rosie's. Its owner's often bragged about the thousands of people it brings in every week. Plus, he enlarged the former Rosie's building for another bar and eatery. Formerly, every Friday and Saturday night, the old Rosie's customers parked in and filled the West Troy lot. They woke us at two AM the following mornings, yelling, turning up radios, slamming doors. We did not call the police. We simply waited fifteen minutes, rolled over, and went back to sleep. Enlarging the prior Rosie's site would have filled parking, including the new metered parking, enough in the evenings. All the businesses formerly at his new site, the Nine Mile Allen Street Corner, have been daytime-only businesses. I've checked in the evenings and never seen the Withington lot, much less the Withington Street meters, or the Breckenridge lots, filled, even on Friday and Saturday evenings in the summer. But Rosie's customers and employees don't want to walk that far at night, and Anita's customers rarely fill the metered parking at the Woodward-West Saratoga corner. They park in the residential area, free. If you want to make enough money from meters to invest into a parking deck, even though a Withington lot deck will not help West Troy or West Saratoga, you must make parking on those three streets, West Troy, West Saratoga, and the north side of Withington, to be residential only, free. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address council on this issue tonight?
Thank you, Sherry.
All right, seeing none, I will open it up to council's questions or comments.
Well, I'll start off by saying, you know, having been involved in this process, this is, this is really hard. And I'll start off by thanking all the business owners, the DDA folks, the city employees that have engaged in reviewing this. It's, it's a tough quandary, in that you need to create an environment that supports parking and supports the businesses in the Central Business District, as well as is respectful of the residents. But in addition, you need to be able to invest in the long-term parking system. Our parking system has opportunities, we know it. We've made attempts, and have made attempts over the last couple of years to increase its efficiency and effectiveness, and it is a process, and it is a process that, I agree, requires an updated plan. I've said that in a number of different, a number of different areas. But you need to have the room, I think, to invest that. And reviewing this, and taking a stab at it, and bringing this to council, I think, has been a tremendous amount of work, and I certainly appreciate the work that's gone into it. So let me start off by saying that. It was a, it's a bit of a thankless job for the folks involved, and so I'll be the first to say thank you.
Well, I have to concur with that, too. Since we've started investing in the changes into the parking system, we've made some great strides. And so I feel like we're at a real change point here, and really moving to a demand pricing parking system, which, which we're doing, so is, is something that is of a policy change, behavior change of not only residents, business owners and their employees, but also our visitors here, right? And that's where we're moving towards next. And I think, you know, Ferndale is not a strip retail mall, free parking lot environment. And I think, you know, we are changing our parking policy to meet the demands of an urban environment. And like Councilman Dan Martin said, we are capitalizing on our opportunities, as challenging as they may, may be sometimes of getting there. So with that said, let me launch into my questions. I really like that we're really trying to better utilize our parking resources. We know we're addressing some particular situations that some residents have talked about, like Ms. Wells, who lack of filled parking lots. Well, that's what the goal of a demand pricing parking system is supposed to do, is to change behaviors from full parking lots to less occupied parking lots over time. And so I have a couple of questions, high level, I'll make some comments, may not have an answer tonight on those, but, and then I'll get to my comments about the actual pricing itself. So based off of the comments in the, the write-up about the goal of the auto parking system, I have some disagreement with the goals. The goal is about increasing quantity and supply only, and I feel like that is a bit short-sighted, and we need to come up with something that is more outcome-oriented versus output. So I just don't think increasing the quantity over time is something that we're all, you know, is a, is a, it's a goal for short-term, I think, but not long-term, that, that needs to be expanded upon. And the rates seem to be framed for more parking versus effective parking, based off of the way the goal is written. And so I have disagreement about that.
The goal, we're hearing the goal from, remind me.
It is written in the, the goal is to manage the parking system in a way that utilizes on-street parking.
Oh, and, okay.
Yeah, it's in your setup, and then it's also in, I think, the resolution.
Oh, gotcha.
Is decrease availability and quantity of parking in the Central Business District to meet the demands of the growing business district. So I would like the parking management teams of three, that they're out there to consider moving towards outcome versus oriented. But I think that's a process in which to get there, because I just think more is not necessarily, we're landlocked.
Right.
Right? We can't just build more to meet every single driver. We can't just build more to meet every single driver who comes into Frindale. That's just something that we don't have the land to do. So, please take a look at that. And then, I guess my, my questions come with the pricing, is that you plan on reviewing the results of behavior change from those rates, but my question is when? So, demand pricing is adjusting pricing to change behavior of drivers to go to different lots? And when do you plan on looking at that so that
Sure.
we're not raising rates every six to twelve months with, is that what you plan on doing?
No. I don't think we're gonna have a raising rates discussion for quite some time, and I guess I shouldn't say that. But I think the intent, I know the intent, is to, we have different seasons here. We have seasons that are busier than others. So I, I was talking to Christina earlier today, that not only will we be monitoring that, monitoring that monthly, but once we're through September, what we figure is February, March, and April, and even part of May, is probably what we consider slower season. And then, then you have the busy season of the summer with all the festivals. And then in September, that will be the last part of the busy season. So to take a look at that six, seven months of what patterns and what kind of increase we've seen, and just, I think we're really, really curious about the patterns and what that system is going to show us. So, probably, I would say quarterly, but then really taking a look at it after six, seven months. I would like to get through September, because again, that's, we're gonna get through, like again, this February, March, and April is a much slower time, if you will, than in the summer, so, but it'll always be looked at.
Okay, so we will have real-time data, usage reports about the lots?
Monthly. So what we'll, what we'll be doing too is not only looking at the patterns of what we have, because the, the sad part about it is, is the only thing that we're gonna be able to compare from years before is what, where we were in revenue from one year over the other. Whereas, this is actually gonna show us patterns and transactions of what parking lot had. We have some of that, but this is like detailed spaces and everything. So we'll be able to compare where we are from last year, but the patterns we won't be able to, but we'll be able to start deducting what's, what's happening and where people are parking.
We will be able to take a baseline on the systems implemented and then look at shifts from that point on
Yes, correct.
On a regular basis to see if we're
Absolutely.
The decision-based pricing or, you know, or system is, is actually moving cars where we need them to go.
Correct.
Other questions, councilwoman? Or not right now?
Well, what's, are we going on to the other?
Well, I've got a question for you, Councilwoman. What would be an example of an outcome versus an output goal?
Like, your target output, outcome is eighty-five percent occupancy rate of a parking lot, and your output would be increasing ten more parking spaces for that parking lot. That's an output versus an outcome. So, right now, it's about increasing the quantity of the number of spaces versus creating a more efficient parking system that is meeting the, being effective demand, meaning demand, but also effectively manage the whole system. So to me, just having a one-stage goal of increasing the quantity of parking is not enough in terms of meeting the demands of our parking system and setting goals and priorities and funding pri, and funding those priorities over time, short-term and long-term.
Thanks.
Just a few thoughts. I mean, we had, like you said, this isn't the end. This is really just a continuation of, of a lot of parking management. And this parking management is a big issue, and, and we're, like you said, we're growing up from meters to real parking. And one of the things that I, that struck me is how much lower parking is here than it is in Royal Oak and Birmingham and some of the surrounding communities. We are significantly lower than they are right now. It seemed to me that we had certain objectives, a sort of a short-term objective of trying to change behaviors. Because if you look at that map, we actually have a lot of parking lots, but we have a couple of lots in particular that are jammed all the time. So we need to begin to change behaviors, and I think that you've taken a good step at the tiered pricing, which will hopefully get to Sherry's point and, and points that you made, which is, we need certain people, if possible, we wanna motivate them to park in lots that are less utilized, and I think you've created a plan that does that. Sort of, I guess, medium-term goal is to increase capacity of our system. And the, I think, reasonable rate increases in some of those prime lots, we'll see how, what kind of increase that creates over time. But we have, as you said, two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars in a, in an account. That is, that is nowhere near enough for a parking lot, for instance, which we talk a lot about. I'm not sure that's the solution or not, but if it is, we've got a long way to go to get there. So we need to begin to move in that direction. But it may be other things, and that's, I guess, gets to the, our longer-term goals, which is exactly what Councilwoman Piana says, which is, maybe that's not the answer at all. Maybe when we really sit down and have some time to think about a long-term plan, something else makes sense. But my guess is some, that something else is still gonna cost money in some way. And so we need to, we need to build the auto parking fund for that reason as well. So I guess my general impression is this does, this plan does a reasonable job of beginning to change behaviors and beginning to collect what will probably be necessary to change the parking system longer term. And so, and at the end of the day, we can revisit this, because we're gonna have data that we've never had before to revisit whether or not this is working
Correct.
or not. So I guess, in general, as you can tell, I am supportive of giving this plan a try.
I think to reiterate what the mayor said, whether you're talking about capacity or efficiency, it requires investment for long-term success. And this also sets up an infrastructure to do that, or start to do that.
Yes, I see it as setting the baseline of testing out the new system, which is what we've been moving towards and investing in. And now we're at that point of analysis over the next six months, like you've said, for the short-term goals. So, I, I do have some questions, and maybe, maybe Christina can talk about it from the Parking Committee, because I've talked to a couple business owners where they're concerned about pricing out their part-time employees, and how that was taken in consideration with the, the pricing, how those were addressed.
Well, pass rates were really established by Rich and Associates, who presented that. I think what you're looking at right now is, is not so much of a, a difference in terms of the current two-hundred-and-forty dollars that they would pay annually. And as a, whether you're a part-time person or a full-time person, the advantage of getting a pass over paying and plugging a meter every hour that you're here, whether it's twenty hours or forty hours, is gonna be a huge savings for you. It's, it is well over, at this point in time, it would be seventy to eighty percent discount off of a rate that you would pay at the meter without a pass. So I think that, you know, we have, I think, over a long period of time, the pass system has been deeply discounted compared to probably many other communities. But we don't wanna make too many large leaps and bounds to, to kinda offset that, because we do know that our, our downtown does quite a bit of service businesses that have a lot of part-time employees, waitstaff and bartenders, to, you know, the, the grocery clerks and so forth. So, you know, you have to do, when you're looking at your analysis, you have to take those economies into consideration as well, which I believe Rich and Associates definitely did.
If you look at the discounted pass rate, which, yes, we've moved them a little further away into the lots that aren't as full, but that rate has stayed the same. So now you've got a couple tiers, especially during the day, in some of those areas, the office personnel are gonna be willing to spend a higher amount for that premium parking space. And the standard is just trying to keep up with the economic, the current situation.
And you know, the other thing that struck me about that, when you look at the map, is, I mean, this isn't downtown New York or even downtown Detroit. So when you're talking about a discount lot and walking further, you're talking about a block or two. So, I, in order to help, again, change these behaviors and manage the parking, a block or two is all we're really talking about here. This is not a huge downtown.
And the back lot, the back wall of the Withington lot, we've moved that parking onto the, to the metered lot, or the meters right there behind the wall. So the meters there are discounted rate, just to get people out of the lot, so we can provide more employee parking within that lot, eh, not employee, but visitor parking.
Visitor park.
Right. So, I mean, for a lot of people, you've, now you've got twenty feet to walk, and it's actually easier to find a spot, because you don't have to pull into the lot, you don't have to deal with the congestion, you don't have to deal with people or traffic, you just park in that on-street area. And there's a free lot now. We made sure that we found an area to provide free parking. And I know we addressed this, what, six months ago, maybe? But it was in the whole process of planning to make sure there was a free place to park that's not in the residential area, that's in a lot that's well-lit and maintained, so...
I do know that the city has increased the number of parking spaces, but I don't, since we started this two years ago, but I don't know what the number of new spaces we've added, do you?
Not many, I think it's to eighteen.
Well, we added on some
No, that's not true. We are adding a lot of on-street parking. I would say it's home to a hundred.
Yeah. So we've added a hundred to the, to the system.
As well as bike racks and alternatives.
And bike racks, and, and, that's right. George, I'll give you, I'll give you another minute to, on that point, I'm guessing? Come on up to the microphone though, so we, the folks at home can hear you.
I hope you understand when a waiter or bartender or a service, he's not gonna come half hour in advance to park his car far away and walk. He's gonna come two minutes before four o'clock, he's gonna come up two minutes before six o'clock to start his job. So he's gonna park wherever he find a place to park. So it's not gonna solve the problem. Been in the book for five, six years, been talking about it, but it's not gonna happen. I had twenty-four employees, they all come two minutes, three minutes before they punch in. So where do you wanna find the place to park? They go park at Save-A-Lot or they park at Foodland? Then they go walk and, and inside waiting for the bus to come in.
I wanna change their behavior to come ten minutes in advance
Yeah, I'm going, this is, this is America, you are not going to change the behavior of, of the people. This is America. You don't change your behavior, I don't change behave, my behavior. We are stuck to certain, certain pattern. And I hope you understand what you dealing with.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions, counsel?
I guess, are we moving on from these rates here? Because we still have enforcement, long-term parking in
We do need to set
Actually, we need to settle the C, the Central, the CBD residential parking pass rate that we're comfortable with.
That's right.
They send to us before we can look at full resolution.
So the proposal from the city is to do the hundred dollars for a year, and the proposal of the DDA Parking Committee is to do the discount rate.
Which is what they're currently paying.
So it's two fifty-two yearly, eighty-four quarterly. So it would be either significantly discounting the, the resident, CBD residential, or keeping it roughly the same, with Rich and Associates being lower yet of fifty dollars a year.
Correct.
May I ask to clarify the point? I know I mean to interrupt, but I think it may help focus the issue. What's the stability of the housing stock there? That was a central component of that discussion. And not that parking will cure all there, but I think part of the driver of the lower rate from the businesses concerned about the stability of that housing stock, right? Or your recommendation?
There's fifteen apartments in the CBD, and most of them are not high-end by any means. And, and not to say that they're bad, but they're not high-end apartments. So, most downtowns, and I know at one point it was in the master plan to encourage residential development within the CBD, and having a permit rate of whatever the current two-hundred-and-some dollars is, that, the only reason I came in lower is because when you benchmarked other cities, a lot of them don't have a very high, or they have a free residential parking pass for the CBD. So I'm fine with the rate that we discussed with the city staff, and I think it makes sense. I just think we need to look at the socioeconomics of the people that are renting right within the core and make sure that you're not discouraging the rental of those units as well.
But, if that's what they're paying now, it wouldn't be a further discouragement.
I don't think any of them are getting permits now.
Yeah, the question is, is it stable now? What's the turnover rate? What's their ability to purchase a permit today?
So Dan, is your assumption that, I'm sorry. Is your assumption that if we made it easier to park downtown, we'd have greater stability and improve the housing stock?
I think it would make an incremental improvement. I don't think it's a catch-all or a fix-all by any means for any of this, but that if we truly want, I think those spaces at least consistently in long-term, I think this is a slight give to, to help encourage that.
Well, I tend to agree that the price, that I don't have any problem with a hundred dollars. If we have fifteen units in the CBD, fifteen units at a hundred and fifty-five is what, twenty-five hundred dollars or something like that, that the city is out, while encouraging people to live downtown, which I think is what we wanna do, and perhaps if we to some degree reduce the expensive living downtown, you know, that would encourage different behavior that might allow them to raise their rates, and the housing stock and improve it. I, I don't know exactly how it works or what the unintended consequence would be, but I think a hundred dollars is worthwhile, and then we can change it, right? After six months, take some data from who's signing up. If no one's signing up right now, it's obviously too high.
The hard thing is there's not a separation between the, the regular permit and a residential, a CBD residential permit. So once you start this program, and we've discussed ways and to do it, to monitor it, you have to register your vehicle, now you'll have a sticker, all these other things, you'll actually be able to, to watch it as it grows and make sure that you're, you're making the proper steps in the future.
Right now, they just get a long-term pass.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion to get things started, but I would move that we adopt the resolution, applying some of these, applying the principles laid out today in tonight's presentation, and with the residential, CBD residential parking pass and the amount of, what did we just say?
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars for six months and a hundred dollars.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Oh, I'm sorry, seventy-five and a hundred.
So again, to clarify, seventy-five dollars for six months, a hundred dollars for the year.
Support. Moved by Galloway, supported by Martin. All right, further discussion?
Oh, just for clarification, the resolution I'm referring to is the one that was presented to us at the table here, as prepared by the city attorney.
Yes.
Which essentially encapsulates the information in the presentation.
It's almost verbatim what I wrote, yes.
For the, I guess I'll continue on with my comments. For the parking rates, I think those are in the, the right direction. I think to test the baseline, so I think those are good ones to start with. They are based off of other cities' averages, and the hour dollar, or the dollar per hour on-street parking is really what sort of the expert says, how do you move people in front of businesses? So getting the people who are this, there for fifteen minutes to take, get their takeout, so that, you know, those spaces are always, there's something always available nearby. So I think that's in order. The long-term parking passes, which we really haven't discussed yet, I think those are in line two. As my employer, I'm just gonna give a story here, my employer will be required to look at our personnel policies in order for parking reimbursements for personnel, and I think we're just sort of gonna be, you know, a case study for other businesses who will be doing that too. And so, we definitely can't afford parking passes for all the premium lots, so we will need to come up with, how do we manage our employees accessing available parking? Because we're not part-time employees. So I think that's something that we're thinking about as we look at these rates. We're like no other business, and I, I, it will just change behavior in what we invest in. And I think that's a good thing, too.
I could envision a situation where they continue to offer the discount lot and the employee could the employee could decide to pay the difference for the premium.
Yeah. What I would like to see in here is somehow is, how do we offer discount transit passes as part of this system, eventually? So, um, because it's a system, not just about parking, um, changing behavior. Um, when would these, when would the, um, businesses get their new parking passes from paper-based to the new electronic cards?
Because we're do, uh, we're actually not able, the electronic cards are not gonna work, so we're gonna do, um, plastic hang tags, not the paper ones that can be duplicated with the barcode, and we're gonna do that on a quarterly basis, and, um, so they'll start April first. Right now, we're giving them away for twenty dollars a month right now, but we were gonna do the cards, but it was just gonna be too complex and too complicated, so we're gonna have to stick with the hang tag. But we are doing a plastic, one that cannot be duplicated, and it'll include a barcode that the handheld will be able to scan to ensure that it is, um, registered to the right person.
Hmm, interesting, okay.
I was glad to hear about the communication plan. I don't think we could stress enough that this is gonna be an adjustment for people. I do, I was also encouraged to hear you say, we'll be lenient at first, we don't wanna drive people mad from adjusting to our new system, so I appreciate that, and I just think we can't over-communicate this enough, um, I'll just reiterate that.
And, and then, and just sort of wrapping up my comments here, um, I heard a lot of, um, management comments today, um, particularly about, uh, if I bring it all together from the comments that we've started, we've heard comments about policing and enforcement, um, from residents in the beginning, um, not necessarily directly related to pricing and parking, but the use of the, you know, the downtown, um, and we've heard, um, the owner of a Sagi came up and talked about the, perhaps there's some lighting problems in our parking lots? That's what I heard, too, and though that's an interest that perhaps we need to be looking at as part of, how do we redirect our monies that we're collecting from the revenue to address some of these problems, um, as part of, um, the policies and the policies that we set? So we have a lot of, of future discussion about how do we use these revenues, um, so this is just continuation of the, I don't know, parking stock is the right word, but what came to mind.
The only good problem to have.
It is, as I remind people.
I know.
Twenty years ago, we didn't have a parking problem.
And then, you know, I do have one last question. Um, how come we came up with standard, the naming, discount standard and premium, um, instead of like employee versus customer lots, or something like that?
Because it's for the employee?
Hmm?
Because the, that is the, those are just for the employees, really?
I, I can't...
It's just for the employees, there's no, the customer, I mean, I don't think a customer is gonna purchase a pass. They might, but I mean, you'd, you'd wanna come down here quite a bit, yeah, it's focused on the employees.
Okay, let me re, maybe I'm not understanding your answer, and I, um, so the discount lots are for people who want to pay that pricing and are willing to walk, right?
Mm-hmm.
But we're hoping that employees who work and visit, work downtown actually choose that option? Is that not the case, or?
Well, we would assume that they would choose that, well, they would wanna choose that for the cheaper parking pass, so that's why it's considered discounted, because it's furthest away.
But some visitors could park there, once they figure out that, you say fifty cents an hour there?
Well, it, well, for the visitor, um, for, as it relates to an average visitor, all the parking lots are the same, except for the Breckenridge lot is the only discounted lot for hove visitors.
For visitors, okay. Further comments or questions?
Mayor, there, I heard a couple, I was just gonna say, the concept, though, of discount, premium and standard lots is a new concept, and, and there will have to be a, a minor ordinance amendment to reflect that in the, in the code, which I would bring to Council on the twenty-eighth. Uh, and I think also, an appropriate motion, you know, for Council's consideration would be to adopt the, it should it choose to, uh, the proposed map that sets forth what the, the premium standard and discount lots are, uh, that are, that is attached to your maturity.
Now, or in two weeks?
Now.
Whenever Council elects to, you could do that now.
And then amend the ordinance.
We would amend that, yes.
Two weeks, okay.
I would, I would move that we adopt the map, one and two.
Well, there's a, there's a motion on the floor.
Oh, we didn't want that on the table.
And Scott, if you consider that a friendly amendment to your motion, and Dan, you seconded the motion, so, and, and the language there being, and, and the adoption of the map with the tiered parking structure, okay? Consider that a friendly amendment to the motion.
Would the Council consider a friendly amendment of putting a timetable on this? Um, do you think that's important in terms of feedback and data? These rates are set on demand pricing, and so we're waiting to have a data usage report to see how we change that. So this is part of the plan? Or would you rather just assume that the...
My personal preference is it's part of the plan, as Council, we can do this at any time, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I mean, I think the expectation's that clearly that we wanna look at this and, and have a remeasurement phase in six months. I, I don't, whether it's in or out of the resolution doesn't matter to me one way or another, I think we accomplish that either way.
I guess I tend to agree.
Who can instructions?
I think we're all gonna be looking for those reports, and...
It's an excellent point, I just don't know that we have to put it, put it in the resolution.
And, so Dan, did you have a, a... That Dan had a comment.
I'm satisfied. We need to vote and then move on, we have the enforcement piece to consider.
That's part of the, is that not part of it?
No, it's not.
It's not part of my resolution.
Oh, okay, okay.
So any further comments or, or discussion, questions on this motion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Uh, Councilman Martin?
Uh, so the recommendation, uh, also includes a parking enforcement, uh, expanding the hours, currently they're Monday to Saturday, ten AM to ten PM. The recommendation is for the new enforcement hours to be made Monday through Saturday, nine AM to eleven PM. Um, so if you'll accept the motion, I would move that we adopt new enforcement hours of Monday to Saturday, nine AM and to eleven PM.
Support? Support the motion? Yep. Uh, Piana, so a motion by Martin, supported by Piana. Any additional discussion on that motion? Straight forward, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that motion is adopted. Thank you.
And then, we have the resolution from the, there was a resolution included in the packet from the DDA Board of Directors requesting action on behalf of Council.
And I think he put that, did you put that in your...
It's not, it's not inclusive of the resolution.
Oh, okay. Which one is it?
So, in, in the packet, it's page nine of eleven, the DDA, I'm sorry.
Yes, of course, yes.
I don't mean to take over, I apologize. The DDA Board of Directors passed a resolution in requesting support of City Council that effectively, uh, indicates that the revenues from this is going to go into the, uh, be used into the auto parking fund to, um, increase the, uh, well, it does say, expanding the available parking in the central, uh, business district, that business owners particularly are concerned with the capacity of the system, uh, to its existing users. Um, currently, the way it stands, this money does go into the auto parking fund, uh, but as a matter of kind of vision and policy, they're asking us to also support, uh, a resolution similar to what they passed. Is that fair?
Yes, you'll see, in that, my call to action, my part of the resolution includes that verbiage.
Yes.
Do you, we, just to clarify, because some of these things that we did were an ordinance change, uh, Attorney Krist had to write it in an ordinance form, so I apologize, I didn't realize that that part of the resolution wasn't there, so, so you'll see, in my call to action, that first two paragraphs reflect the resolution of support. Where, where should be right after, this is where the attachments are.
Yes. So that was in your recommended action?
Yes, yes.
Which, did we adopt?
We adopted the resolution.
We adopted the resolution?
Which makes no reference to, uh...
Which it does not.
We adopted this resolution.
That's right.
To be, okay, uh, along with the rates for parking passes to be increased for the more convenient lot. Well, I mean, I, I think the resolution does just, I mean, does exactly what we've been discussing all evening, which is, raise the rates for occasional visitors, I guess in the parking lots, for the long-term parking passes, and sets CBD residential parking rates. It doesn't set or state any goal or, um, reason for implementing this, other than what's stated in the three paragraphs above, which I would say includes neither output nor outcome, um, based goals, or make mention of where the money's going, but I would assume that without a change in policy, all the revenues would continue to go to the parking, uh, fund until further Council action.
That is correct.
That is correct, the, the revenues go into the parking fund, as described in the presentation, um...
So if, if Councilwoman wants to come up with an outcome-based goal, we could do an amendment to this resolution in two weeks, or four weeks, or six months, if we wanted to. And then have, as a goal, you, you know, as part of our budgeting process, we could have, um, a, a goal specific to the auto parking fund, like we did for the budget, principles that would guide us in allocated budget funds for the parking.
I, I think that would be, um, a, one way to, a good way to, to, to address that, but what's the intent? Can you move the intent again?
Yeah, let's, let's talk about it. You know, again, you know, as I had talked about with the city parking team and the DDA management, or the DDA Parking Committee, and then with the consultant, the three merging of, of philosophy, one of the, the big concerns that the DDA, um, Parking Committee had was that, that they were, it wasn't the rates that they had a problem with, it was the rates that would just be raised, just for the sake of being raised. And so, they, they really were looking at some kind of guarantee, if you will, that that money is not just going to the general fund to pay for whatever. And so, the conversation, we, what, started very, very specific to, let's say, parking deck, to the more broader base resolution you have before you that they agreed to support, that, it does, it says a lot of what we've talked about today, that it's going back into the auto parking fund, but that particular resolution was the resolution that they were the most comfortable with, um, from where we started, which was, again, this money goes for a very specific reason, and, um, if Council could support that resolution, that would be most helpful, that they would, they'd feel mu- much more comfortable that the money is, is going into the, into the auto parking fund.
Okay, well, I guess, sorry, go ahead, Dan.
No, I was gonna say, it, it goes to vision, you know, in, in that, that we as a body, as we've invested in this in the past, recognize opportunities in our parking system, and our commitment to continue to address those, in the central business district, and in my mind, in the surrounding residential areas, which we've done a ton of work on the past year. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yep, absolutely.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Piana, did you, did you have a comment?
Um, we could still do something more, I apologize.
Um, well, I, I think what I was hearing from you is, um, suggesting tackling this, because I think the DDA and the City Council and the city are all, have sort of the end goal, we do know, um, we would like to, uh, increase our parking, we need to, right? That's what I said tonight, was not saying that we didn't need to, I'm just saying that, um, we do need to increase parking, but it can't be the only goal.
Right.
Right? And the way this is reads, is like increasing the quantity of our parking is kind of our only goal. That's, that's my comments restated, um, and I feel like that, um, while the intention was to keep it a broad statement, um, I just feel like that, um, you know, the, the words efficient, effective, management, parking is something that needs to be part of that, so, um, and that also, we need to look at the revenue, the revenue, they want the revenue to go to the parking fund to pay for parking activities, future parking activities, whatever they may be, whether it may be investing in a parking deck for long-term, or, and I'm suggesting, looking at how do we, um, address more public service needs in the downtown, um, that the revenue generates, so, um, to address some of these other challenges that have been, um, posed by business owners tonight, so...
I mean...
I mean, we have lots of opportunities to do that, so...
I mean, I guess, if you look at the second paragraph of their resolution, supporting and implementing smart growth policies, budget and operational management strategies of the auto parking fund, and Ferndale Park to increase the availability and quantity of parking in the central business district, to meet the demands of the growing business district, shall be the primary goal of the Ferndale parking system for the DDA and the city of Ferndale. It's pretty inclusive, is there, is there something missing, especially, I mean, especially when you talk about these other policies and, and strategies? Is there something missing from there?
For me, there is, and I guess, I, you know, it's, um, it's about providing good access to business owners, uh, and the parking, and, um, you know, it's all about balancing quantity, price and location, and meeting the, the needs of business owners, and I, I don't know. I'm, it's wordsmithing, but I just feel like there's something, something missing out of it. Um, and I'm willing, if we have, um, I mean, the DDA is doing some goal setting, and the City Council's doing some goal setting, and we need to, you know, come up with, um, some budget principles, which, um, Councilman Galloway suggested that we do. I just wanna see alignment, and I just don't feel like this statement is alignment-setting enough for my tastes. And I need to see some commitment from bringing these together, so that we have more consensus on, and direction and priorities set with the auto parking fund, so I guess, it's getting to the same thing perhaps that the DDA wants, but in a slightly different way, so, I just...
Yeah, well, I, I think, you know, I, I totally understand what you're saying, I, I think the statement goes towards exactly that. I think, having spent a lot of time listening to business owners in the DDA and city employees and, and residents, I think we are all more in alignment, um, and I think that sometimes getting together, uh, and stating that at a high level is, is effective collaboration. Stating it through this resolution, this would be one way to do that, in my opinion.
And I wanna offer, too, that I, I believe this was meant to be a much broader scale, and I think some of the things that Councilmember, or Mayor Proton Piana is saying, is more of the actual part of the plan, of the, this is what we want to accomplish, where I think this intent for this resolution was just a much more, kind of where we wanna go, but more of a broad statement of support, that that money is still gonna be focused on the auto parking fund and, and, and the general direction, so, and I think we have, especially with goal setting coming up with the, um, on Monday, I think, or, sorry, we...
I, I've...
Objective, sorry, obje, not goals.
From today.
From today, that we can actually start drooling down and getting to some of those, um, detail, more of the detailed part of the plan and the outcome-based measurements, just throwing that out.
I'm, I'm willing to support this resolution, but these things have to be met, we, we, we need to tighten those up, better alignment between goals, setting priorities, budget priorities for using the auto parking fund as a priority for, for this, for two thousand and thirteen, um, and it has to be in alignment of, you know, the data usage report that we're gonna get out of the parking system, and the projected revenues that we're hoping, well, we don't have a projection of those revenues, we have to wait and see.
And that is the next step, that is our responsibility, and frankly not, we can't give that responsibility to anyone, including the DDA, so we will have to be more concrete about a plan for this vision. So I'm, personally, I'm comfortable, because I think this sort of talks about where we've gotten to as, as two groups, and, and it, it, it's not perfect, it probably could use some wordsmithing, but I, I'm comfortable, knowing that ultimately, the authority for creating that plan and the details in that plan are, are gonna have to come here, and we're gonna, with, obviously with the cooperation and consultation of, of those folks. That's myself, but...
With that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
That we adopt the resolution in the...
In the packet.
Packet, the DDA Board of Directors' resolution on parking system priority?
Yes.
Well... I, I, I don't think it's necessary, I, I, I think what we've got gets the job done as far as getting the parking system up and running, and, uh, I'm a little uncomfortable adopting this high-level vision, period. I, I, I think it's something that can be addressed in, in goal-setting and, and some sort of less formal approach, but to, uh, commit formally the city's, uh, reasons or uses of, thing, I, I just think... But to, uh, commit formally the city's reasons or uses of thing, I, I just think is both unnecessary, and I don't think tonight's the night to do it, if we're gonna do it at all. And I, I mean, it, I don't think it makes sense to wordsmith this at the table.
Yeah.
Since this is essentially, as Councilwoman Piana says, a output, it's all about expanding available parking in the central business district, which, um, could be considered, you know, code word for parking deck, which I'm not sure has a majority of support at this time. Um, and I also think we need to maintain the flexibility, uh, to use parking fund in different ways, that it doesn't talk about non-motorized, I mean, if the light rail comes down, that maybe, I don't know what all needs to be done, but I'm not comfortable adopting this, this evening.
Well, and let me say this, just to bring it back to Robert's rules, we have a motion, but we don't have a support, so technically, we shouldn't really even be debating it. If there's not a support, it dies for lack of support. And I'm not hearing a support, so I'm going to just rule that this dies for lack of support.
Okay.
So, moving on, to call to council. Police chief has been patiently sitting in the back of the room, anything for the good of the city this evening, chief? All right, fire chief Collins, anything else from the fire department this evening?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I was remiss in thanking Jennifer Longthorne of HR for all the hard work she did and our promotions, uh, that took a huge burden off all. I had the easy part of just making a decision who the top players were, so that was a big, very big help. Um, we also assisted Madison Heights with a huge apartment fire, and just bringing up the value of the Oakway and having the other cities assist, I think they had, uh, eight departments there. And, uh, we were able to stop the fire from destroying a four apartment unit, only two of them are severely damaged. But it was quite a spectacular fire, it got going, uh, for people overloading their wood-burning fireplace inside of their apartment. So they not only burned their apartment, but the neighbors, and started the other two neighbors down the way, too. So it was very valuable having all our Oakway people there to help.
Chief, can you remind me how many communities are in Oakway?
There, uh, we're nine, there are eight now, 'cause Waterford swallowed Pontiac.
Okay.
So we have eight, eight members, which includes all that area still underneath the Waterford Fire Department, but those two, uh, didn't merge, but they swallowed them up.
Thank you, chief, appreciate it. Speaking of Jenny, anything else from the HR perspective this evening, Jenny? Okay.
Just a couple things, good evening, mayor and council. Um, we are actually preparing for some upcoming negotiations, we'll be beginning to talk to our, both of our, uh, police units, patrol and command, as well as fire. And so, what I'd like to do is kinda get the word out there with council, we're gonna start to, we're gonna have a conversation on, um, January twenty-eighth in closed session, but to get you kinda thinking about things that you're interested in seeing and whatnot, and we'll have a presentation as well, as far as where we are on that. And with that, we are proud to say that in week five, I believe we hit, with Weight Watchers, we've lost a total of about eighty pounds on our second round. Um, so we've collectively lost almost four hundred pounds since we started our program under Weight Watchers, and we're really proud of that, so, thank you for your support.
As you should be, great job. Thank you. Jill, anything from the recreation department this evening?
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Just a couple announcements, starting on February seventh, February fifth, Tuesday, February fifth, um, AARP will be, um, holding free tax aid at the Kulak Center. Um, every Tuesday from February fifth through, I believe it's April tenth is the first Tuesday, um, starting at nine forty-five AM at the Kulak Center. We'll take the first twenty-five, um, people, first come, first served.
Seniors, or?
Sixty-plus.
Sixty-plus.
And coming up on February eighth is our sweetheart date night dance. Um, this year, we are partnering with Oak Park Recreation, um, to provide this dance. It will be at the Oak Park Community Center, and the eighth, from six to eight PM, twenty dollars per couple, um, and that includes picture, um, a treat, uh, light refreshments, dancing. And also, again, this year, the Emory will be offering a pre-dance dinner special, where they'll, the dates, they can go, um, before the dance, and the girls will eat for, eat for free if they bring their registration receipt. So registration is available on our website and also over at Oak Park. Thank you.
Excellent, very fun. Uh, Derek, anything else from economic development this evening?
Nothing, nothing additional, your honor.
All right, Lloyd, DPW.
Nothing from the DPW.
All right, Joe, anything from your neck of the woods?
No.
All right, uh, so, from the city clerk's office.
Absolutely, um, just because we haven't talked enough about elections lately. Periodically, the school district election coordinating committee must meet to make arrangements for the conduct of school elections. Um, the Oakland County clerk is the coordinator for all school districts within Oakland County, and he's called a meeting for this Thursday. Um, each local clerk will be asked to opt-in or, in effect, agree to conduct school elections. This is a process we go through, have gone through every two years, and now it lengthens out to four years. Ferndale has opted in since the Elections Consolidation Act went into effect in two thousand five, with both the Ferndale and Hazel Park school districts now having their elections in even year Novembers. There's no additional cost to the city for these offices to be on the ballot. So unless there are any objections from council, I do plan to sign off on the agreements on Thursdays, on Thursday. And then, along those same lines, elections, um, believe it or not, the dead, the nominating petition filing deadline for library board is coming up on May fourteenth at four PM. And the filing deadline for council and mayor will be August thirteenth at four PM. Just get you start planning.
There you go, all right. Anything else from city manager this evening?
I have a couple things. Um, we are back in full swing, and we'll be spending the next couple of months doing goal-setting and starting the budget process. I don't suppose any of you know when the dates are for the school board strategic planning? As you know, we're looking at February fourth for ours, and I just wanna make sure we're not overlapping.
Don't, he mentioned it, but I'm not sure I heard it.
Well, um, as it stands, um, right now, goal-setting will be from five thirty to nine thirty on Monday, February fourth, we'll go to the library, um, dinner will be provided, and the public is welcome. We'll do a press release once we've confirmed that everybody can go, as well as, I wanna make sure that does not coincide with the, um, the school's goal-setting as well, since it sounds like a few of you will go to that. And then we will finish goal-setting on the following week, uh, February eleventh, from five thirty to seven thirty, prior to the regularly scheduled meeting. And if we need to go on any further, we can schedule those at the table. And then I will be working with, uh, um, Finance Director Hugh Banks to come up, uh, again with, um, budget meetings as well, so those can get into your calendar. Um, I know we'll be letting up again spring break and things of that nature, so look for all of that, and I think, um, that'll keep us busy for some time, so. We're gonna hope for a little, uh, no more snow, and we're good to go.
Thank you. Uh, anything else from the city attorney's office?
I have nothing, your honor.
All right, uh, Councilman Martin?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Piana?
I have a couple. I wanted to give a shout-out and thank you to, um, Derek Delacorte and his intern Steve. Um, last week was, um, the Dale's Neighborhood official meeting, um, independent of the school, um, district, and we're moving on and building the neighborhood group. Um, and we had about fifteen people show up, and we talked about physical improvements, um, safety issues unrelated to the school, um, but relevant to the neighborhood, and, um, social, social activities. And, uh, our, our neighborhood, um, our neighborhood group also looked at demographic changes from two thousand to three, two thousand and ten, and Derek and Steve put those together, um, on behalf of the neighborhood group. So thank you for, um, spending time on, on doing that. The, um, residents were really interested about how is our neighborhood changing over the last ten years. Um, I also wanted to say, anybody else in the city who is interested in creating a neighborhood group in their neighborhood or block group, um, you can come, um, and hang out with us at our meetings, or call me, or email anybody else who is volunteering, and I can connect you, um, and we can get you going, and talking about what it takes, and give you, uh, some of our, our stories about how we're getting going, so that, um, we can expand the neighborhood group idea, um, beyond the Dale's, um, so. Um, and right before Christmas, or right after our December fourteenth council meeting, um, I was part of a, a group of elected officials and, um, down Woodward who went to Cleveland to ride their bus rapid transit system, um, to experience the, the sights and sounds and feels of what, um, their master, their high-end mass transit system looks like, to see what we could set as a vision and exceed their, uh, what they built, um, for our region. And I was really impressed, and I'm excited, um, to see what we can, um, uh, do better than them, uh, for our region, since they have the, the best one in the United States. So, um, looking forward to, to bringing those ideas, um, onto the Woodward alternative analysis process. That's it.
Excellent. Councilman Galloway?
Well, I almost hate to say anything more about, uh, parking this evening, but, uh, you know, certainly, George is passionate about, uh, his views on the DDA, and he has a great business, and we respect him, but, um, you know, I can remember not too long ago, the former occupant of his building, uh, the owner of the Fashion Center, uh, used to come here and rail, uh, and I forget whether it was increasing it to a quarter an hour, or putting in parking meters at all, and how that was going to ruin the downtown, and everybody would flee to Oakland Mall or something like that. Well, Ferndale survived and, and thrived, and a heck of a lot of, uh, study and investigation, really over the last decade, has been done on our parking system, uh, with both Christina and the DDA and her own staff, and I suspect that we'll be just fine with parking rates of seventy-five cents an hour. Um, so, we'll manage it, and George will still have his patrons, uh, driving up in their Mercedes and Ferraris, uh, to dine at his establishment.
All right, uh, just a couple quick things from me, I did have the privilege and honor of swearing in some of the new school board members, so congratulations to all the four new members and all the members that are serving, and Jim O'Donnell, I forgot to mention, was elected the chair of the board. So Jim, that's why he's stepping off the library board, he's taking on a big responsibility, uh, maybe the biggest responsibility in our community, is educating our kids, and I know we've got a, a great enthusiastic school board ready to get started. Last week, I attended my monthly mayor's council, we have the South Oakland County Mayors Association, and we met in Birmingham, and we heard a great presentation about, um, uh, character in communities. It started with character education in the schools, but they're expanding it to communities of character. I facetiously said Ferndale got lots of characters, so that oughta really play well here. Um, but, uh, listen, I'm gonna pass along some information, not only to our school board, but to the staff as well, in terms of some of the innovative things that they're doing to really bring, uh, uh, principles of character to, to communities and schools. It was, uh, really an excellent presentation, actually, so, uh, look forward to more of that. Finally, later this month, uh, January thirty-first will be the next mayor's business council, I look forward to meeting with some of our major business owners in town to talk about how we can be a more business-friendly community, so that's coming up, uh, in two weeks. Uh, and with that, meeting adjourned.